Spike. Good to see you. Came out on an icy day this season.
What do you think about the season here? How you feeling with the world?
It's all right.
Should be. So should I.
To be frank, I'm a little worried. I'm just concentrating on big basketball there right now.
That's right, one thing at a time.
Good evening. We'd like to call the Durham City Council meeting to order. Certainly want to welcome all of you that are here with us this evening. If we could just take a moment for solid meditation, please. Thank you. Would ask Councilman Davis to lead us in the pledge.
... by the United States of America and to our which stands one mission under God invisible with the liberty and justice of our all.
Madam Clerk, would you call a roll, please?
Mayor Bell.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Cole-McFadden. Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Moffett.
Here.
Councilmember Reese.
Here.
And Councilmember Shul.
Here.
Thank you. As probably many of you know, each year since I've been mayor, I've had the opportunity to present the, what we call, an annual State of the City address. And generally, that's an address where I try to highlight some of the things that have occurred in our city over the past year and give some highlights in terms of vision going forward. This year, we tried to decide to do something a little bit different. And it's going to be more or less a fireside chat to a certain extent, except we don't have a fireplace, but y'all pretend. And I've asked Bill Shure to sort of emcee this discussion about the city and how it's progressed over the last year. And many of you may or not know Bill is a lifelong resident of Durham, retired GlaxoSmithKline executive, someone who's been very involved in this community. He served as interim director of the interim president of the Durham Chamber of Commerce. And I'm pleased that Bill has agreed to participate in this discussion this evening. What I'm going to ask is if the council members will proceed to your left, there are seats reserved in front. That's the council of city attorney, city manager.
Mayor Bell, thank you so much for asking and doing me the honor of asking me to be involved with your State of the City address tonight. As a long-term, as a Durham native, as the one who grew up here, raised family here, whose parents grew up here, it's a real honor to be able to talk about what's happening in Durham, all the good things, and some of the things we need to work on. And I think what we want to do every, try to do every year is a video to kind of show what's going on in, in this case, 2015. And we will, it is entitled, and I think you're going to enjoy it, it's called "This Is How We Do It in the Bull City." Mayor Bell, the only thing I was disappointed in that I didn't see Councilman Shul dancing. Maybe next year.
We'll work on that.
I'll tell you, everywhere I go, and it doesn't matter which town, which city in the triangle, everybody's raving about what's going on in Durham. They're coming over here for a lot of reasons, they're enjoying it, and they're going back, and a lot of people are moving here. And if you would make kind of an opening statement before we get into some of the question and answers about your perspective on what is going on in Durham these days.
Well, Bill, I would agree with you. And I, you know, I tell people over and over again, there's no question that our city has progressed very much in the past few years. And what I've found is, it used to be a time that we were going to visit other cities to try to find out how they did things and maybe some things we could take back. But I can tell you now, we're having more people come to Durham saying, "How did you do it?" And I, you know, it's easy to sit back and brag and say, "You did this, you did that." But the truth of the matter is, I think we've been very fortunate. Durham is now the fourth largest city in the state of North Carolina. I have to remind people of that. We're about the fourth largest city, about 25,000 people behind Charlotte, Raleigh, and Greensboro. We're a city that has a very diverse community, which we pride ourselves on. We're a city that has a great workforce and a great community. And I think about a lot of the things that we've been able to do, but it starts first with the people who work for the city of Durham. They make a lot of these things happen. You saw them there. You saw the mayor can't sing, but everybody else can sing.
I did notice that, by the way.
You noticed that, right. But, and I think another thing, what we've done is we've adopted a strategic plan that we did in 2013. And the council's committed to that, administration's committed to that, and the city employees are committed. And I think that's what drives us. We have a vision statement that speaks about the fact that we want to be the leading city and provide a sustainable and excellent quality of life. We have a mission statement that talks about being able to provide quality services and make Durham better and a greater place to live and work. But I think all those things are a combination of being able to move where we are and the fact that we've got the type of corporation, the public-private partnerships that allow a lot of this to happen.
I think you touched on something really important here in Durham, is the public-private partnerships that make a lot of these things happen. So there was a resident satisfaction survey recently done that I think you did for the first time jointly with the county.
That's correct.
And this year's survey actually showed, I think since 2005, that the Durham's image has improved by about 27 percentage points in the last 10 years. What do you attribute this to? And how do we keep that, those good things, those good numbers going?
Well, again, I think that's another example of recognizing the challenges that we have. Anytime you have a growing city, you're going to have challenges that go along with that, and we're going to speak to some of those. But that survey, I think, was done first in 1999. But the level set was 2005, when the consultant said, "Nobody wanted to look at where Durham was." They didn't want to use Durham as a benchmark. But the survey that he just completed, which showed the improvement that we had and showed that over 84 percent of the residents liked to live and work here in Durham, I think that's what's very significant. And again, I think it comes back to the fact that we do the surveys, we take them very seriously. The administration takes them very seriously. If you went back and looked at the survey, you see that each one of the departments, where it was an area of their focus, they looked at it and they made plans to try to improve. So I think it's looking at what people are saying, looking at what surveys are saying, taking them very seriously, then about the business of trying to make improvements where it's necessary.
And it's a way, I guess, to do, to improve on what's being done well now, and also take a look at where our problems are and our issues, to be able to kind of focus on those two.
Exactly. You know, anything about Durham, we aren't afraid of challenges, and we aren't afraid of open to come on in terms of what we do. We're a very transparent community. And I think that allows for the type of results you're seeing happening in our community.
I think, I think so also. And we have good leadership. That's very important. So we look at what's going on downtown. Now Durham is obviously larger than just the downtown, but what's going on downtown is remarkable. It's a bit of a, I guess, a reformation, if you will. I've heard so many people talk about, in the last five years, to see what's happened in Durham, everybody's jealous of how we're, of what we're doing and how we're doing it. And I'm trying to eat my way through downtown Durham, Mayor Bell, and I haven't been able to do it yet, as you can tell.
I'll leave it to you.
But I'm trying. It's incredible. What are some of the projects on the table for the next couple of years for downtown? And how will this growth affect our infrastructure downtown?
Well, I think you've probably seen some of the announcements in terms of a new 27-story residential facility that's going up, which will have a commercial in it also. There's no question that if you look at where we want to grow in our community, obviously Durham is, that downtown is important. We've tried to make it a 24/7 destination point, where people are living there, working there, and coming there to, for entertainment. But we have another hotel that's being, they call it now the Jacktar Hotel. We have some apartment projects that are on the planning books. I think if you look at what's happening in our innovation district, the last factory that was available for adaptive reuse, the Chesterfield building, that is underway. So I think in the future, you're going to see more people living downtown, working downtown, and hopefully we have more restaurants where you can keep, kind of eat your way through.
Well, I'm trying. And from an infrastructure standpoint, I guess we'll eventually see dry cleaners and grocery stores and things like that?
Well, hopefully. To make it complete, we really want the downtown to be livable, walkable community.
Right.
So if you have those type of facilities, I think that facilitates that. And when I talk about people living downtown, we have apartments, but another issue that hopefully we'll speak to later in the program is more affordable housing. And that's certainly an area which presents a challenge, but it's a challenge I think we can, can work towards solving.
As we kind of stay on this theme of how Durham is growing and the kinds of things that we have seen recently, and the economy is obviously on the upswing here, and looking at all the buildings, you mentioned some of the growth going on. There's going to be a lot of laboratory buildings, I think, aren't there? Biotech firms are going to be doing that.
Exactly. That's part of the innovation district that we're seeing. The Chesterfield building is a good example of that. Life sciences and et cetera coming in.
So the, it looks like, I think, the tax rate has gone up about 14 percent county-wide, and the unemployment rate is pretty low. So what does all, what does all this mean for Durham's future?
Well, let's not talk about the tax rate going up. That's something we're going to set in June and July, and when we do the budget. What has happened is the evaluation assessment, which the county did, has gone up that much.
I meant the property values.
Property values, not tax rates. There's a big difference in tax rates and property values. But, but I think, I think what it says is that the community's progressing. And when I speak about Durham being the fourth largest city, I think what's unique about Durham, we've done that with people coming here, not by annexations, because we haven't had any large annexations to bring people in. The fact that it's growing, it's the fact that jobs are here, businesses are here, people are growing, people are coming here. So I think that's one of the good things about the results of the recent evaluation. It shows that people are willing to make a risk and do an investment in Durham. I say if you invest in Durham, it's not a risk, but we want you to make those investments. And I think those investments are going to pay off.
And a lot of those investments are not local, are they?
Exactly.
Coming from all over the world.
Exactly. There was a time when we were sort of, sort of begging people to come, but now we're trying to be a bit more discerning in who comes in, and I think we're in a position we can do that.
A little bit like Dean Smith and Roy Williams and Mike Krzyzewski, we're kind of selecting as opposed to recruiting.
Very selective, yeah.
So all the success that we're having in downtown and in environs even beyond downtown, we still have some issues. And, and there are, as is the case in probably every community that's growing like this, the issue of those who are not benefiting necessarily from this growth for one reason or another, and particularly affordable housing. And I think that's something that, if we're smart here in Durham, we're going to be, we're going to be dealing with that issue and do it in a very wise and smart and collaborative way. Would you tell us a bit about what's going on from a housing standpoint?
Well, Bill, we understand very much that as Durham grows, it's not just about downtown. Downtown is already the center of what's happening. But we've got to be cognizant of the fact that we want this growth to take place in other parts of our community, and that means some of the revitalization that we're talking about. But more importantly, it means being able to have housing that's affordable. And when we speak about affordable housing, we speak about affordable housing relative to income. And persons who are living below the median income is where we've had our focus. And we've done a couple of things. One, a couple of years ago, the city council was unanimous in dedicating one cent of the property tax to affordable housing. And for Durham, that means about an income stream of about $2.5 million plus, and as the evaluation grows, that would grow. So that's one indication of our support of affordable housing. The others been that we recently hired a consultant to look at the whole issue of affordable housing in our community. And we expect to get a report from the company sometime at our next city council meeting, which hopefully will lay out a roadmap that we might use in terms of trying to look at affordable housing. We also understand that we have assets of our own that we can deal with. And whenever I speak about that, we have public properties that might amend themselves to affordable housing. Again, for me, affordable housing, if you're talking about using public property, I'm talking about mixed income, where you have market rate as well as below median income persons living. And a good example of that's what's been happening over at Southside, the former Roland Hills unit, where we did about 144 mixed-income units. I think 100 percent of those units are occupied for persons below the median income. I think about 40 of those units are for market rate. I think about 90 percent of those are occupied also. So we've got an example, we've got a model that we can build on. And certainly, as we look at what's happening in affordable housing, as we look at what the consultant brings forth, hopefully we'll be able to move in that direction to make sure that happens in the city of Durham.
That's great. It leads right into the next question, the next issue about your poverty reduction initiative. I think you introduced this about two years ago. And how about letting us know some of the accomplishments that have taken place and how public-private partnerships have played a role in accomplishing some of those goals?
Well, Bill, I think that feeds back into what I said earlier. We've been very fortunate in Durham to make the progress that we've been able to make. But we also realize that we have those challenges. And one of the challenges is that we have far too much poverty, in my opinion, for a community such as Durham. So what we've done at our State of the City address in 2014, we laid out sort of a challenge. And the challenge was to begin reducing poverty neighborhood by neighborhood, year by year, starting in 2014. And we've tried to be very focused on this and data-driven, so we've selected a particular neighborhood in northeast-central Durham that we first were going to focus on. It started with the city, it's really a citywide effort. We have the county commissioners involved, we have the general schools involved, we have the business community, universities, social organizations. More importantly, we have the residents of that targeted area involved also. What we did is to set up six task forces. These task forces, in our opinion, are sort of related, the underlying causes that are related to poverty. We have a task force on education, on housing, on jobs, on finance, on public safety, and health. And if you speak about what has happened, first I want to compliment the persons who've been involved in those task forces, because this is strictly volunteer effort, and no one's pushing anybody to do this, they aren't getting paid. But they've done a commendable job and come forth with what I think are very commendable goals and objectives. And where we're at now is that we have defined at least three of those goals for each task force. And we're hoping that the year of 2016 will be a year where we begin to execute some of those goals, towards those goals. One of the goals that was set up by the Finance Committee and was chaired by Councilman Steve Shul and County Commissioner Brad Foster and Ms. Glendola Beasley, was a kids' savings account, which was, it kicked off in January of this year, and one of the schools that we've targeted is over in Y Smith, which is in the area that we've targeted. And I think it's going to be, I know it's a great program, and I think it's going to continue to grow. And hopefully, the whole idea behind this is if we can develop a template for the area that we're looking at now, and if we're successful with that, then it means that we can move that template to other parts of the community in terms of the whole issue of reducing poverty. Our jobs task force made a report, and what I was pleased to hear is that many of the jobs that they've been able to secure are from residents in a targeted area. So again, that's, that's very important. So good work is being done, but it's a long challenge, it's not something that's going to happen overnight, and we've got to be in it for the long haul.
That's actually great to know that that's going on. What role does some of the nonprofits, because we have a lot of nonprofits in this, in this community?
Quite a few nonprofits. And, you know, what I'm hoping is, and this, this isn't a task force that's, that's building concrete, you're constantly getting people coming in and out to be a part of this. So we've had some nonprofits that have been representative on the task force. What we're hoping is, as we continue to grow, more will come in and hopefully provide the skills and resources that can help make the task force successful.
That's great. So moving to another issue, crime. And I know every, Durham is no different from any other, any other city. Crime is an issue. It's a pretty complicated thing, I guess, at some times for people who have to deal with this on a regular basis and the issues associated with crime. And we did have some, the highest homicide we had in Durham in a number of years, I guess, maybe the highest. What's going on from your perspective, from your office, in terms of dealing with the crime issue, not just the perception of it, but also the kind of in the weeds kind of a thing, how we're dealing with it?
Well, again, that has probably been one of my priorities personally in terms of, since I've had the opportunity to serve as mayor, dealing with the issue of crime in our community. And as you said, we aren't unique. Crime occurs across cities, across the state, but we're concerned about what happens in Durham. And when I look at where we are today versus where we were in 2001, believe it or not, we've made improvements. Because along with the growth in this community, the challenges are crime. And when we came in office in 2001, if we looked at incidents of crime per 100,000 people, we were probably at a high. And we've seen that constantly go down until the year 2013. Then we saw an uptick in 2014. And as you indicated, 2015 was the year where violent crime really peaked, from my viewpoint. When we talk about violent crime, we're talking about aggravated assaults, we're talking about robberies, we're talking about rapes, and we're talking about homicides. And of course homicides is what gets everybody's attention. But the fact of the matter is homicides are the smallest portion of the four categories of violent crimes that occurs. But it's ultimate crime, and obviously when that happens, obviously we're concerned. We've looked at a lot of things, we continue to look at things. We had the United States Department of Justice to come in. They came in at my request to present maybe some opportunities that we might be able to look at in terms of reducing violent crime. As a result of that, we had two task forces to go to cities that they recommended we look at, and one went to Boston, one went to Kansas City, Missouri. They've come back, and we're in the process now of trying to discern how we're going to implement some of the practices that they saw. In addition, as you probably know, the Human Relations Commission was charged with looking at issues of police, police community relations in our community. And it took them about six months, but they came back with some recommendations. And to their credit and to the credit of administration, by and large, most of those recommendations have been adopted. One of the ones that you probably will be speaking about later on tonight at the city council is the issue of body cameras. That was one of the recommendations of the Human Relations Commission, and the council's about the business now, seeing how we may be able to do that. Another was written consent to search, which they recommended be implemented, and the police department is doing that. But again, when you look at the environment of a community, you look at education, you look at housing, you look at jobs, you look at employment, you also look at crime. And I can tell you, that's, that's very high on my list, on the council's list, on the manager's list, on the police department's list, to try to see how we can reduce that. And it can't be done just by law enforcement alone. It's really got to be a community effort. The community has also to accept ownership. And to the credit, we're getting more support from the community, which we welcome.
That's really important, I would assume, because you can't put a police officer in everybody's home or in, on every street corner. You have to have the community buying in and making sure that they're doing their part also to help reduce that.
Very much.
Yeah. On another subject that's important to all of us, and it's the transit and how we handle traffic, transportation. I've been involved in this issue for a long time, and when I was at GSK, traffic replaced the weather as the thing everybody talked about when they came into work in the mornings. And so this is a big deal. This is probably the one regional issue that's truly regional, because cars don't stop at county lines. So we have to work as a community, as a Triangle region, to be able to address So we have to work as a community, as a triangle region, to be able to address this. You are chairing the Transit Board now, and can you tell us what's going on with that, with the transit, from your perspective?
Sure, I'd be happy to. And just coincidentally, when we had the survey that you just spoke about, one of the areas that was highlighted by residents was the issue of transportation. And they looked at transportation from, I guess, the public transportation as well as the roads. But specifically in terms of Triangle Transit Authority, the Go Triangle, you probably know that about 2013, we were given permission by the Federal Transit Administration to enter into one of the Smart Starts Program. We did that, and as a result, we developed corridors for a light rail system between Orange and Durham County. We just recently received news that the environmental impact statement that we had accepted, the record of decision, was accepted by FTA, and it's now open for on the website for people to look at. Hopefully, in about a couple of weeks, the TTA will be submitting an application to FTA to allow us to enter into engineering development. And that's a three-year process. And if we're successful with that, at the end of that time, we'll then ask for a full funding grant agreement. And what that would mean is that if that's accepted, then the feds will provide their share of the funds, we have our share of the funds, and obviously we've got a state issue that we're dealing with, but hopefully we're gonna get that solved, which will allow us to begin construction of a light rail system. And it's anticipated that that system should be in operation in 2026 if we're successful. But again, it's a very important part of the quality of life of a community. If you look at what's happening in cities like Atlanta and et cetera, we're trying to make sure we don't get to that point. We need to provide persons with other alternatives to transportation other than the cars and even buses. So we're very hopeful that we're gonna move forward on that.
Transportation is one of those issues that takes a long time to fix or to address and a lot of money, and it, but it doesn't really matter whether you're in Boston or Washington DC or LA, if you're stopped dead in traffic, you're stopped dead in traffic, aren't you? So we hope not to get to that point. So I hope, best of luck with all those transit issues. So Mayor Bell, you have about two, you have two years left, and you've had a long, and you know, I guess we can't talk you into running again, but no, we can't. So with that decision, with that decision being made, what are some of the biggest challenges that you see coming up in the next two years that you're gonna be dealing with?
Well, I think we've sort of hit on them in the conversations we've had. Obviously, the issue of affordable housing, the issue of reducing crime, the issue of having sustainable growth, where we're able to bring in quality jobs and provide employment for our people. The infrastructure piece is very important, and one of the questions that people have raised is the issue of our roads. And we've gotta find a way somehow to get a better handle on how we maintain our roads. I know we've done it in the past, I'm sure we're gonna be doing it in the future. Recreation is another issue in terms of providing adequate facilities for a growing economy. So those things won't get done in the two years, but hopefully they'll be on our plate, so we'll be planning for that, and at some point in time, they will come to fruition.
Yeah. You'll have a busy two years, I have a funny feeling.
We'll have a busy two years.
Yeah. Well, we've actually reached the end of our, of our formal question and answer period, and would like to see if you wanna make a few comments as we, as we close up tonight.
Well, Bill, let me say again, first of all, I appreciate the fact that you took the time to be here with us. Again, I want to congratulate administration, over 2,400 employees that really make the city of Durham work. Beverly Thompson and her group who really put this piece together. And I should've said this from the start, we're talking about the State of the City, and in my opinion, the State of the City of Durham is good and getting better. And it's no question in my mind that we have challenges, but we're the city that's up to meeting those challenges. As I look forward in terms of where we're going, I'm very hopeful. I've said to people over and over again, I'm in Durham by choice, not by chance. I look around the state, I look around the country in terms of where I would like to live, and I've made my decision to be here in Durham, and I hope, hopefully other people will do the same thing. But Durham has had challenges in the past, and we've been able to meet them. I'm convinced that the challenges we have today, we'll be able to meet those in the future. And we'll meet this through the type of partnerships we've been able to create, the public-private partnerships, working with our community, and trying to be very transparent in the activities that we take, taking into account. Listening is very important, and we do that a couple of ways. We just go in through a series of coffee with councils, where we go out into the city of the five pack districts and talk about the budget. More importantly, we have an opportunity to hear what other people are saying. When we do a community survey, is the one we just talked about, it's not taking a survey and just putting it on a shelf, it's something that is a living document that the administration looks at, the staff looks at, to see how we can improve. And I think we've been successful with that, by virtue of the fact that each year, we've been getting increasing positive reviews for the residents to take that. So again, Durham is in good hands, is in good hands because you've got a very capable council, is in good hands because you have a very capable administration, is in good hand because you've got a very capable set of employees, over 2,400 that are working day and night to say, good things are happening in Durham, and we continue to make that happen.
Mayor, thank you so much, and thanks for allowing me to be with you tonight.
Great, thank you. We're gonna take about five minutes, it's 7:33, we reconvene at 7:38 to start our council. Thank you.
We were reconvening the city council meeting, and I would ask, are there announcements by members of the council? Here are none. We proceed with the priority items by the city manager first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone, no priority items.
Likewise, the city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, no priority items.
Likewise, the city clerk.
No items, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Again, the agenda consists of the consent agenda and general business agenda and public hearings. I'll read the consent agenda and if items to be pulled by either a member of the council, a member of the audience, we pull that item and discuss it later. I'll read the headings of each one of the consent agenda items. First item being approved, item one being approved, city council minutes. Item two is firefighters relief fund board of trustees reappointment. Item three is the Human Relations Commission appointment. Item four is the Housing Appeals Board appointment. Item five is the Durham Performing Arts Center Oversight Committee appointment. Item six is the Durham Open Space and Trails Commission appointment. Item seven is the 2015 municipal primary and municipal city elections. Item eight is response to recommendations presented by the Human Relations Commission on water management. Item nine is contract amendment with Republic Parking Systems for parking management, sir.
I have some questions in there, I wanna send it back to work session.
Which one are you speaking about?
Item nine.
Item nine, contract amendment.
I had requested some information, I'm sorry. I had requested some information the last time this item came before us, and I have not seen that, so I have an unreadiness. And I talked with staff, and apparently a delay does not present any problem.
Item ten is the implementation program for pedestrian bicycle networks. Item eleven is proposed advanced acquisition for the future expansion of Lake Mickey, property of Mildred, Y Ellis, and others. Item thirteen is resolution in support of roadway improvements related to sun cap location within the Durham city limits. Item fourteen is item to pull, that's the contract for the purchase of body worn cameras for the police department. Item fifteen is the Carver Street Extension Contract ST 257 award. Item seventeen is environmental systems research institute software maintenance service That concludes the consent agenda items, oh, I'm sorry, items twenty-one to twenty-nine, items that could be found on the general business agenda, public hearings. Item thirty is adopt resolution requesting a deed of partial release for certain premises related to an installment purchase contract, related to an installment purchase contract and to authorize the city manager on his designated to execute other associated legal documents as necessary to make changes to any of the legal documents prior to execution, so long as the changes are consistent with intent of the agenda item memo and existing versions of the documents. Item thirty-one is proposed sale of the north parking garage by upset bid pursuant to North County Journal Statute 168-269. That concludes the consent agenda. I'll entertain the motion for the approval of consent agenda with exception of items nine, exceptions to item fourteen. It's been. Did I get a second on that?
Second.
It's been properly moved, second, Madam Clerk, will you open the vote? All right, close the vote.
It passes seven to zero.
We move to the general business agenda, public hearings. Item twenty-one is conference plan amendment 1650 TW Alexander Drive, A150009.
Good evening, Steve Medlin with the Durham City County Planning Department. First, I would like to certify for the council that all public notice has been carried out in accordance with the general statute and the unified development ordinance for all public hearing items this evening, and that affidavits have been executed to that effect in our part of the case files. First standing before council this evening is a plan amendment for 1615, or excuse me, 1650 TW Alexander Drive. The applicant's civil, capital civil engineering requests an amendment to the future land use map from office and commercial to industrial for a 13.25 acre site located west of the intersection of TW Alexander and Stirrup Creek Drive. The site is in the suburban tier and is currently vacant. The site surrounds a private cemetery, which is not part of this request. The applicant has stated that the proposed industrial use is more compatible with the surrounding uses and/or designated future land use patterns than the current commercial and office designations. Staff is recommending approval of this plan amendment based on the conditions warranted in amendment to the future land use map and the proposed land use pattern, meaning the four criteria for plan amendments. The planning commission did hear this case and recommended approval by a vote of 10 to zero on December 8th of 2015. I'll be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Thank you. Again, this is a public hearing, the public hearing is over. Now, first, ask other questions by members of the council, staff report. We have one person that has signed to speak on this item, Michael McQuillan. Is there anyone else who wants to speak on this item? If not, if you can come to the podium to the right, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, council members. I just also, first of all, wanted to start out by thanking staff for all their help with the land use amendment change and the subsequent rezoning with this property. The parcel is located in the Triangle Business Center near Miami and TW Alexander. The business center was created in the 1990s, and most of the properties are vacant. There are a lot, there's a lot of interest right now with all the properties, and this particular property is, has some irregular lines with regard to future land use as well as zoning lines. And what we're trying to do is trying to clean up the, clean up the zoning lines so that the developer who has a lot of interest in the property can move forward with their development of their property. I just wanted to let you know that I will be available if there are any questions. The planning commission had some questions regarding the landscape easements that are prominent at the intersections, and those are in a dedicated easement and will not be touched. That's all I had, so if you guys have any questions on this or the rezonings, I am here to answer the questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions of the developer? If not, is anyone else who wants to speak on this item? Let the record back, no one else has to speak. I declare public hearing is closed, matters back before the council.
Will be added.
It's been properly moved, and second, Madam Clerk, will you open the vote? Close the vote.
It passes seven to zero.
Item twenty-three, twenty-three, conference of, twenty-two, zoning map change, 1650 TW Alexander Drive, Z1500022.
Good evening, Steve Medlin with the Planning Department again. Zoning case Z15-22 is the companion zoning case to the plan amendment that you just heard. This is a request to change the zoning designation of a 13.07 acre site located at 1650 TW Alexander Drive from commercial center with a development plan, office institutional, industrial park to industrial light with a development plan. The development plan associated with this request does have a number of commitments that include a maximum square footage of building area of 200,000 square feet, two external access points, one access point to the guest family cemetery, a maximum limitation of 66.41. limitation of sixty-six point four-one percent impervious surface, and ten percent tree coverage. Additionally, text commitments on the development plan include limitation of uses, accommodation of transit facilities, including the dedication of right of way, including four feet of additional right of way for a bike lane along TW Alexander Drive. Commitments regarding roadway improvements resulting from the review of the traffic impact analysis will be provided at TW Alexander Drive, Sterrup Creek Drive, Presidential Drive, South Miami Boulevard, and at the site access. The development plan also commits to general location of site access points, location of tree preservation areas, building and parking envelopes. The staff has reviewed the request and has determined that it is consistent with the conference of plan and all other adopted policies and ordinances. The planning commission considered this item at their December eighth meeting and recommended approval by a vote of ten to zero. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Again, this is a public hearing. The public hearing is open. I would ask first of the council other questions of the staff, the staff report. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak on this item? Again, this has been a public hearing. Let the record reflect, no one asked to speak on this item. I would declare public hearing to be closed. Matters back before the council.
Move the item.
Second. It's been properly moved. Second, Madam Clerk, will you open the vote? Close the vote.
It passes seven to zero.
It's been properly moved. Second, Madam Clerk, will you open the vote? Close the vote.
It passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Moved to item twenty-three, conference of plan amendment fifty-five fifteen, fifty-five seventeen, North Carolina fifty-five highway, A 15 000011.
Good evening. Steve Medlin, once again with the planning department. The applicant Horvath Associates is requesting amendment to the future land use map from commercial to industrial for a three and a half acre site located at fifty-five fifteen and fifty-five seventeen NC fifty-five highway, which is south of Sedwick Road. The site is in the suburban tier within the Falls Jordan B watershed protection overlay district. The site is composed of two parcels. The southern parcel is currently vacant, while a vacant single family house is located on the northernmost parcel. The applicant has stated that the proposed change to industrial, excuse me, to industrial will allow for a pest control operation on the site, whereas the current commercial designation will not, and that the existing building on site could be used to house the operation. Staff has reviewed the request and is recommending approval of this plan amendment based on the conditions warranted in amendment to the future land use map and the proposed land use pattern, meeting the four criterias for plan amendments. Sorry. Planning commission considered this item on December eighth and did make a recommendation for approval by a vote of ten to zero. Be happy to answer any questions, council members.
Again, it's a public hearing. The public hearing is open. You've heard the council. Heard the staff report. Are there questions by members of the council? If not, we have one person that has signed up to speak on this item, Tim Silver, Sivers. Is anyone else who wants to speak on this item? You have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tim Sivers, Horvath Associates, sixteen consultant place in Durham. As staff had said, this is about a three and a half acre site. It's located just south of the NC fifty-five and Sedwick Road intersection. This request for, is to change the land use from commercial to light industrial, and the zoning, which is the next case, will be changed from a CN to IL with a D. This light industrial proposed classification will promote orderly, orderly development in the area to match, to match areas that have been developed that are north of the Sedwick and fifty-five intersection. I am available if you guys have any questions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there questions of the developer by the council? Again, is anyone else who wants to speak on this item? Let the record reflect that no one else asked to speak on this item. This has been a public hearing. I will declare public hearing to be closed. Matters back before the council. It's been properly moved. Second, Madam Clerk, will you open the vote? Close the vote.
It passes seven to zero.
Item twenty-four. Zoning map change fifty-five, fifty-five fifteen, fifty-five seventeen, North Carolina fifty-five highway, Z 15 000024.
Good evening. Steve Medlin with the planning department. Zoning case Z 15 dash twenty-four is a request to change the zoning designation of a three and a half acre site located at fifty-five fifteen and fifty-five seventeen NC fifty-five highway, which is south of Sedwick Road and north of TW Alexander Drive from commercial neighborhood to industrial light with a development plan for ultimately a pest control operation with office. The development plan that is associated with this request commits to the following: a maximum of fifty thousand square foot of building area, one external access point, a maximum of seventy percent impervious surface, ten percent tree coverage, as well as text commitments on the development plan, including accommodation of transit facilities and limitation of uses, as well as the general location of site access point, location of tree preservation areas, and the building and parking envelopes. The staff has determined that the plan as submitted is compliant with the conference of plan and all other adopted policies and ordinances. The planning commission considered this item at their December eighth meeting and by a vote of ten to zero recommended approval.
Again, this is a public hearing. You've heard the staff report. Are the members of the council have questions? Mr. Tim Sivers, again, you have three minutes. Is anyone else besides Mr. Sivers who wants to speak? Thank you.
I'm just available if anybody has any questions. Thank you, sir.
Are there questions of the developer? Here and then, let the record reflect, no one else asked to speak. I'll declare public hearing to be closed. Matters back before the council. It's been properly moved. Second, Madam Clerk, will you open the vote? Close the vote.
It passes seven to zero.
It's properly moved. Second, Madam Clerk, will you open the vote? Close the vote.
It passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Moved to item twenty-five, conference of plan amendment forty-sixty-two, Sterrup Creek Drive, A 15 00008.
Good evening. Steve Medlin with the planning department. The applicant Capital Civil Engineering requests an amendment to the future land use map from office to industrial for a six point five seven acre site located at forty-sixty-two Sterrup Creek Drive, which is at the intersection of TW Alexander Drive and Sterrup Creek Drive. The site is in the suburban tier and is a portion of a twenty-two point one-five acre parcel. The remainder, remainder of the parcel is already designated industrial on the future land use map. The site is currently vacant. The applicant stated the proposed use is more compatible with surrounding uses and the designated future land use patterns than the current office designation. Staff recommends approval based on the conditions warranted in amendment to the future land use map and the proposed land use pattern, meeting the four criteria for plan amendments. Planning commission considered this at their December eighth meeting and by a vote of ten to zero recommended approval.
You've heard the staff report. It's a public hearing. Are there questions by members of the council or staff? If not, Mr. Michael McQuillan? You have three minutes. Is anyone else who wants to speak on this item besides Mr. McQuillan?
Okay. Thank you again. This property is adjacent to the previous property, again, in Triangle Business Center, cleaning up zoning lines, cleaning up future land use lines. This property actually has a lot of interest. We're, we've submitted site plan drawings for this, and there's a lot of interest in bringing warehouse light, light industrial and office space to these, to this property also. I'll be available to answer any questions. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any questions of the developer? Anyone else who wants to speak? Again, let the record reflect, no one else asked to speak. I would declare public hearing to be closed. Matters back before the council. It's properly moved. Second, Madam Clerk, will you open the vote? Close the vote.
It passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Moved to item twenty-seven, zoning map change Farrington mixed use, Z 15 00009. It's not a consistency statement on twenty-six.
We need to back up one item. The zoning case.
Forty-sixty-two Sterrup Creek Drive. I thought we did that.
We just did the plan amendment, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, twenty-six.
Steve Medlin with the Durham City County Planning Department. Zoning case Z 15 dash twenty-one is a request to change the zoning designation of twenty-two point one-five acres located at forty-sixty-two Sterrup Creek Drive from office institutional industrial park to industrial light with a development plan. The development plan associated with this request commits to the following: a maximum of three hundred and fifty thousand square foot of gross floor area, five access points, a maximum of sixty-five percent impervious surface, and ten percent tree coverage. Additionally, the development plan includes limitation on uses, accommodation of transit facilities, including additional four feet of right of way for a bike lane along TW Alexander Drive. Roadway improvements resulting from the traffic impact analysis will be provided at TW Alexander Drive, Sterrup Creek Drive, Presidential Drive, and at the site access. The development plan also commits to the general location of five site access points, location of tree preservation areas, and building and parking envelopes. Staff has reviewed the request and has determined that the request is consistent with the conference of plan and all other adopted policies and ordinances. The planning commission recommended approval of this on December eighth by a vote of ten to zero.
Heard the staff report. Are there questions by the staff on the item? It's a public hearing. Does anyone want to speak on this item? Let the record reflect, no one asked to speak. Public hearing is closed. Matters back before the council. It's been properly moved. Second, Madam Clerk, will you open the vote? Close the vote.
It passes seven to zero.
Okay. It's been properly moved. Second, Madam Clerk, will you open the vote? Open the vote, close the vote.
It passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Okay. Item twenty-seven.
And hopefully for the last time tonight. Steve Medlin with the Durham City County Planning Department. Zoning case Z 15 oh-nine is Farrington mixed use, is a request to change the zoning designation of a nineteen point nine-five acre tract located at fifty-seven oh-eight Farrington Road between Rutgers Place and NC fifty-four, from office institutional with a development plan and residential suburban twenty, to a mixed use with a development plan M U D to allow a mix of office and residential use. The development plan associated with this request commits to the following uses: a maximum of, a range of five hundred to six hundred residential units, maximum office square footage between one hundred thousand to one hundred seventy-three thousand square feet, and a parking structure that will range between one hundred thousand and five hundred square feet in size. Text commitments include a commitment for vertical integration, transit improvements for, including four additional feet of asphalt for bicycle lane, as well as right of way improvements for Rutgers, excuse me, Rutgers Place, Crescent Drive, and Cleora Drive. And details regarding architectural features and site amenities. The traffic impact analysis included improvements at NC fifty-four Farrington Road, Rutgers Place, Crescent Drive, Cleora Drive, at the site access, and a cross-access driveway. Graphically, the development plan commits to general location of five site access points and building and parking envelopes, and clarifies the location of site amenities as proffered through text commitments. Staff has reviewed this request and has determined it is consistent with the conference of plan and other adopted policies and ordinances. The planning commission considered this on December eighth and by a vote of eight to two recommended denial of this request.
Again, it's a public hearing. Let me ask first other questions by the council of the staff report. That being the case, we're going to move to the public, and let me try to set some time for this. I have one, two, three, four, five, six persons that are speaking in opposition to this item. Let me call the names because I want to find if anyone else wants to speak before I set the time. I have Christine Westfall, Deraina Freeman, Becky Winters, Larissa Sybil, Jim Sybitt, Jay Golston. Now, is there anyone else that wants to speak on this item, whose name I didn't call? Okay, that being the case, I'm going to allow eighteen minutes for the opponents and eighteen minutes for the proponents. That's three minutes per opponent, and the proponents have a total of eighteen minutes. I have Deb Anderson and Ken Spaulding as the proponents.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Ken Spaulding. I represent the applicants in this matter. Deb Anderson of Wood Partners will make the presentation tonight, but I want to say there has been a significant difference on the affordable housing aspect than it was back at the planning commission. So we do look forward to you hearing our proposal. Thank you.
I can see it here. Should I do something to have it? There we go. Perfect. Thanks. Good evening, Mayor Bell, city council members, staff, and the public. My name is Deb Anderson, and I am a developer with Wood Partners. Joining me tonight are the Wood Partners Development Team, our attorney Ken Spaulding, our land planner Bob Zumwalt with McAdams Engineering, our traffic engineer Earl Llewellyn of Kimley Horn Engineering. With tonight's full agenda, and in order to respect your time, I would like to briefly address those aspects of our proposed rezoning that have garnered questions over the past few weeks. Our request is to rezone twenty acres of land that lies in the southeast quadrant of the future Lee Village Design District. Could we have the next slide, please? I don't think I have controls for that. I don't have a mouse. Thank you. It's pretty, pretty nifty. So, there, you can see our site. So we have twenty acres of land that lies in the southeast quadrant of the future Lee Village Design District, an area of roughly three hundred acres in size. This image shows our site southeast of the future light rail transit stop and near the Farrington Road Highway fifty-four intersection. Our vertically integrated mixed use project will include five hundred to six hundred apartments in two phases and one hundred thousand to one hundred seventy-three thousand square feet of office. During discussion with some of the city council members, we were asked, how much of the proposed office square footage will be located within the residential portion of the development? We will include five thousand square feet of vertically integrated office. We have revised text commitment number one to read as follows. The project will include at least one vertically integrated building in the first phase, consisting of a minimum of five thousand square feet of ground floor office space. We have for many, many months, in fact, since the fall of two thousand and fourteen, been working with neighbors in the area. We have modified our development in response to those neighbors, and we have the support of those neighbors for our zoning request. Mr. John Eady, president of the Woodland Acres Homeowners Association, is unable to attend tonight due to the weather, but he forwarded this email to me to read to you, and I have hard copies if you'd like for us to hand those out. Miss Anderson, due to the inclement weather, I may not be able to attend the Durham City Council meeting tonight. I would thus like to pass along my comments on the proposed rezoning. Please feel free to use this at the meeting or to go forward to city council members. As president of the Woodland Acres Homeowners Association, which is comprised of the resident homeowners surrounding your project area, I can say that my neighborhood association has long been supportive of the Lee Village Transit Station Plan and the compact neighborhood tier concept. The proposed Wood Partners development is consistent with the goals of both mass transit and mixed use walkable neighborhoods. Thus, our neighborhood association is agreeable to the proposed mixed use development. Speaking for myself as an individual homeowner, whose house is directly across the road from the Wood Partners project, my wife and I have been very appreciative of your efforts to work with us to minimize some of the impacts this project might have on our personal living environment. You have been very receptive to our suggestions and had demonstrated a willingness to make what modifications you can to protect our privacy and quality of life, as long as those modifications meet current Durham standards. Based on your responsiveness to our concerns, my wife and I support the proposed rezoning of this property for mixed use. Thank you, John Eady, fifty-seven oh-eight Crescent Drive, Chapel Hill, North Carolina. Now, let me address three features of our proposed development that have piqued your interest. First, density, mixed use design, and timing of the future Lee Village Design District. We began meeting with the planning staff and our consultants in the summer of two thousand and fourteen with the goal of designing a community that would provide high density near the future Lee Village Design District Transit Stop. Given that the Lee Village Design District has not yet been adopted, our best and only option for providing a high-density development at this location under current regulations is to request a mixed use zoning, and, at the same time, to commit to compliance with the compact neighborhood tier standards. It is important to note that both the Ninth Street Compact Design District and the Downtown Design District incorporate many of the form-based aspects of the compact neighborhood tier standards. To put this in context- To put this in context, the maximum residential density allowed within the suburban tier at our location is limited to fifteen and a half units per acre. However, by proposing mixed use and incorporating the compact neighborhood tier standards, we are able to develop up to fifty-three and a half units per acre. Still, our project goes even further. This development will also employ important form-based features from Durham's existing design districts, such as: compliance with the build-to lines, requiring that buildings be located close to the streets, thus creating an active and inviting pedestrian-level experience, and the inclusion of vertically-integrated office and residential space that will provide a much-needed live-work option in this part of Durham. One might ask, why not wait for the Lee Village Design District to be finalized before developing this site? We feel that the most direct answer includes a realistic consideration of the timeframes required to design and implement a new design district. At present, the city has several important projects running either simultaneously or in advance of the Lee Village Design District, namely affordable housing and the creation of the Patterson Place Design District. If we were to wait for the Lee Village Design District boundaries to be set, the text to be written and approved, and the design district zoning applied, we would likely not be able to bring our first units to market any sooner than late two thousand twenty to early two thousand twenty-one. Today, over sixty-seven percent of the multifamily rental apartment stock in southwest Durham is fifteen to thirty years old. We believe the implementation of our development plan helps to relieve this housing dilemma while implementing many of the urban and form-based principles that currently exist in the city's established design districts. Next, transportation. The most important message for me to convey tonight with regard to traffic feasibility and transit improvements is that we have worked tirelessly with the Durham Transportation Staff and NCDOT to prepare an extensive traffic impact analysis, which was followed by additional studies as requested, in particular, NCDOT asked for additional studies, to ensure that we can deliver a high-density, mixed-use development which balances the need for density in proximity to the future transit stop while also allowing the Farrington Road Highway fifty-four intersection to function at an acceptable level of service. Our proposed rezoning commits one point seven million dollars of developer-funded roadway improvements to this intersection. We do, we can, I can go into detail on that, but I'll wait and see if you have questions. In summary, until the state is able to fund and build the Highway fifty-four super street with a Farrington flyover, we believe that the transportation improvements included in our project will bring much-needed relief to this challenging southwest Durham intersection. Last, affordable housing. At our Planning Commission hearings, we shared that our company is a strong advocate for affordable housing, having constructed over seven hundred units since the recession in twenty-three communities across the country. However, at the Planning Commission hearings, we were concerned that it would not be viable to provide these units in advance of the city of Durham adopting a specific program with guidelines for implementation, public financial incentives, and a thorough inspection procedure to facilitate annual certification of compliance. After spending more time speaking with Planning Commission members, representatives from the Committee for Affordable Housing in Durham, and the city's consultant enterprise community, we recognize that affordable housing is a key priority for the city of Durham. As a result, tonight, we'd like to add a new tax commitment, it would be number ten, which will read as follows. The developer-owner will provide ten affordable rental units at eighty percent of AMI and ten affordable rental units at sixty percent of AMI prior to the issuance of the final certificate of occupancy in Phase Two of the residential portion of the project. These units will be provided for twenty-five years. In the event the city of Durham establishes a program in the future that provides incentives for affordable housing, this project shall not be prohibited from participating in such a program. Each year, following the final certificate of occupancy for Phase Two of the residential portion of the project, the owner of record will provide annual certification of compliance with this commitment to the Durham City County Planning Department. The owner of record shall pay a penalty of one thousand dollars per non-compliant unit made payable to the city of Durham for each unit not meeting this threshold for any given year of service. I know that was a mouthful, we have it printed out, and I'm going to have that passed out so that you can take a look at that while I continue. I'm almost done. We believe that by offering these units in our second phase, the city will have time to develop and adopt a program that includes annual certification, which is vitally important to our firm. And now, I'd like, I'd like your attention again, I know we're passing things out, but it's important to note that the staff report represented to you all that there are currently only ten affordable housing units in the immediate area in the Lee Village Design District. By adding twenty units of affordable housing, we are effectively tripling the stock of affordable housing in the Lee Village Design District. I hope that you will find our proposal is a genuine collaborative effort to participate in Durham's important affordable housing initiative. In closing, we respectfully ask for your approval of our proposed rezoning, given these merits: high-density development near a future light rail transit stop, vertically-integrated mixed-use design that incorporates urban, form-based principles of the city's existing design districts, one point seven million dollars of roadway improvements privately funded, over one hundred and fifty million dollars of tax base added to the city of Durham, new water, new sewer, and new stormwater infrastructure, new multifamily rental housing stock for southwest Durham, new affordable housing units for southwest Durham, and last but not least, neighborhood support for this high-density, mixed-use development. Thank you.
Let me ask first, before we call up the other persons, other questions by members of the council of the developer at this time? If not, then let's go to the persons who have signed up to speak on this item. Come to the podium as I call your name. Christine Westfall, Ms. Freeman, Ms. Wenders, Ms. Seibel, Ms. Swat, Jim, and Jay Golson. Yes. Sure.
Good evening, council members. Nice to see you again. Thank you for all your advocacy that you've shown for affordable housing in the city in the past several years. I think many of you know that I'm an affordable housing advocate. Lived in Durham for eighteen years and worked for ten years in Chapel Hill, helping to implement affordable housing in new developments when the town of Chapel Hill requested that developers provide fifteen percent affordable housing in new developments. Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Christine Westfall. I'd like to say that I'm excited that the Woods Partners Development is considering including affordable housing, and that we have a developer who's familiar with developing affordable housing. And really where I'd like to focus my comments is on the scale of what they're considering for this new development. Currently, there are existing homes at the site, at the property, and fourteen out of ninety of those existing homes are affordable under the percentage of AMI that is considered affordable, sixty to eighty percent of the area median income. And so that's, that's almost fifteen percent of the current housing is affordable at this time. Now, they're talking for an upzoning that will increase their allowable units from seventy to six hundred, so that's, it's quite a substantial upzoning, maybe nine times the amount of units that they'll be able to put on that site. And it seems commensurate that the affordable housing, the share of that's affordable housing would be higher than just thirty units. For many years, the town of Chapel Hill, for instance, has asked for developers to include fifteen percent affordable homes in new developments, and if the city were to consider something on that scale, that would be asking for ninety affordable rental units in the community. And so I would just like the city to consider maybe, consider the residential part of this proposal maybe for another month, and discuss whether it might make sense to ask for more affordable housing at that site, and also consider whether maybe that affordable housing should be in the Phase One rather than the Phase Two of the development. And thank you very much.
Next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Deidreana Freeman, and I live at one thousand five Worth Street. I'm also very excited that the developers decided to include some affordable housing options in their plans, but it does definitely concern me around pushing it to Phase Two, being that there was, it was said, we went back and forth quite a bit about, you know, being able to do it at all, so I would definitely like to see that moved to Phase One, and then also along the lines of what Ms. Westfall mentioned, is that the twenty units in a six-hundred-unit development, five to six-hundred-unit development is quite a low number. Understandably, it's, it's better than zero. I just want to make sure that I make the comments that I mentioned to a few city council members, to all of the city council members, and making sure that, that we understand that, and that developers also understand, there's a concern for the greater good of the city of Durham, not just for southwestern, and that our current guidelines are in the process of being adapted to meet the needs of our planning landscape, and that being that we're, we have a shortage of about eight thousand home, or units of affordable housing. Recognizing that we have a compact neighborhood design coming, and then a housing program, affordable housing program tool coming online, also the station and, station area design and a pipeline, the rushing could hurt. I want to be specific in saying that if you put the horse before the cart, develop, developments in place where we're developing a comprehensive or, or design district, the unintended consequences will continue to be the outcome that we, we have recovered, that we have to recover from. It's what, whether we're having these conversations and planning staff around stormwater, or traffic, or fire and police safety, I mean, if we're, if we're doing this in this piecemeal fashion, it's just not productive, and it makes it more difficult to decide who, who gets to be upzoned or rezoned versus the other, because you came in first, and it's just not, it's just not an equitable situation. I'm not opposed to the development, I'm opposed to the timing, and I just want to be clear on that. Thank you.
My name is Becky Wenders, and I live at thirteen oh four Seton Road, and I am a member of the Coalition for Affordable Housing and Transit, and the Durham Community Land Trust Board, as well as the Planning Commission, but I'm not, I'm speaking, I'm not officially speaking for anybody except me. And I too appreciate that the developer has, has evolved some on the affordable housing issue, but I, I still have some concerns about the development, and I, I think that another month to work out some details would help too. I'm concerned about the, the, developing this, this neighborhood, this development to the compact district standards that were created for Ninth Street and Downtown, and I think that those, those standards might not be appropriate for the suburban location of, of Lee Village, and we should have the opportunity to study that some more. I don't really know what the timing of the phasing is, but possibly, it would, it would work to, I don't, do Phase One and approve Phase One, and then approve Phase Two when the time came, when it was closer to the time after the planning had been done. But this is, we are talking about less than ten percent of the land area in, in the Lee Farm, I mean, Lee Village station area, but if you believe the projections of the transportation planners that they are using for the light rail, there, the, there's going to be something like seventeen hundred housing units in, in the Lee Village station area by twenty forty. So, you know, this is roughly a third of that number of units. Now, of course, projections, I don't know what their assumptions were really, but this, it's a big chunk of, of, of housing here that we should know more about the, the area as a whole before we go forward with, I believe. And then, I also have concerns about how the affordable housing goal will be met in this area. I don't really expect the, the private, this developer to get all the way, I personally don't expect them to get up to the fifteen percent, which would be ninety units. I think that it, it needs to be a partnership between the city and the, and the developer, developers, but, okay.
Thank you.
My name is Larissa Seibel, and I have a three-minute video with two people who could not be here tonight who need affordable housing, and I think through the magic and light and sound in the back there, they're going to put that on. And after the video, I'm going to ask people who support affordable housing to stand up if you support housing for people in need.
I was a longtime resident of Durham about four or five years prior to two thousand twelve, when my mom passed away dramatically, and that led me to leave the Triangle area, my job, everything, to go and, you know, tend to business with her. But I came back to Durham with the concept and the idea that, you know, when I returned, there would be an opportunity for affordable housing for my son, and I have a two-year-old son.
Okay, my name is Larry, I'm at the Urban Ministry, I've been here since July, and I got Section Eight through the HOU program, and for a while, it took a long time because the people weren't taking two-bedroom vouchers, they was only taking one-bedroom vouchers. Then finding people to take the vouchers was very hard to do. I got my actual voucher in August. I made about twenty, thirty calls, and I paid one application fee, but after they got the application, they said I wasn't suitable for, because of my credit.
I think the rising cost of housing here has, has actually been a setback, you know, for those of us who want to come and to live, you know, I think that's what I'd like to address most. You run into a hopelessness, and you don't ever want to have a resident of, of a place called home, you know, feeling hopeless. There's enough here to go around, there's enough and plenty for us to share and to grow with. We don't want to feel helpless, we want to, we want to grow and prosper as well, and have the resources and, you know, to do so. I was blessed to have had stable roof over my head, you know, throughout my childhood and young adult life, and then to be thrown kind of out of that and, and to instability that's unexplainable. You, you, you do have a roof over your head, but that's for a limited time. You don't want to accept mail at certain places because you don't know how long you're going to be there, but things are important, and you have to have an address to keep a license, you have to have an address to vote, you have to have, to exist. We have to figure out something by the end of the year. The place that we are staying at now, the person will be coming, returning back to their room on December twenty-second. So, everything's urgent, you know, there's, what is January going to look like?
Yeah, it's the city council, because that's what they said they was going to do, help in homeless, you know, work together with the people. So, do what you was voted in to do. That's all. That's all.
My name is Jim Savar. 1114 Woodburn Road. I am here to talk about the importance of this project and how we need to think about it in the long term. Let me remind you, as you well know, that the elements of the affordable housing goal in Durham are 15% of the units in all station areas for income, first families with incomes of 60% of the area median income. We too are pleased to see that the developer has responded to the encouragement and acted on its own corporate experience in providing affordable housing. We note that they have voluntarily complied with design district standards that are not yet in place. And yet, we are disappointed that they have not voluntarily embraced the housing goal of the city, a policy that, that the city has committed itself to. So what is being offered, when you remember that we're talking about 60% of the area median income, is 10 units, less than 2% if the full 600 units is provided. It's, it's a, it's a great start and we hope everyone can think about how, how to, how to make, how to expand that. It is not possible to specify a percentage or number of units the development can have. And yet, the council cannot make a decision about any rezoning case without keeping in mind its long-term goal of achieving the affordable housing target that it has set. And so in considering any specific case, you need to, you need to consider, as a number of speakers have pointed out, how are you going to get to that goal in this station area? And if the, if the, the only way to proceed in the absence of a plan, and we recognize that getting a full plan in place would take a considerable amount of time. The only way, I think, to proceed with confidence is with a more substantial commitment on the part of the developer to providing units. And to do that in phase one, not just, not just in phase two. So we, we encourage you to, to think about the implications of this, to make certain that this is the right decision. We, to say that we're tripling the number of affordable units, remember 10 of those are market rate and will not stay affordable for very long if the experience in station areas elsewhere, elsewhere is, is found. I think what we want to do is to look for ways to all work together, the city, wood partners, the community, nonprofit organizations that can provide assistance with the approach that you're looking for, a certifiable effort to meet and affordable, to provide affordable housing units. Thank you.
Good evening, council members, ladies and gentlemen, everyone who works for the city. So I feel like I'm kind of like the random, the random, sorry, Jay Goldstein, 304 Kinsale Drive, Chapel Hill. So I'm kind of like the, the random black dot that's in the middle of the development that we saw earlier, not necessarily coming with everybody else, but, but am in a posal and definitely a delay. So I'm just, work for a company here in Durham. When the Planning Commission votes eight to two to deny and send it back, usually that means shut it down and come back to the Planning Commission. So to then just show up at city council and make changes last minute, reveal those to the public right in front of everyone before they have time to understand, I don't think that's good business. I also don't think it's great business to be bringing it up when I was told by the police department to stay off the roads all day and then we still have the meeting this evening. I don't think that's good business either. So I'll be brief. So I'm going to, I'm going to be a neighbor. I'm going to be close by. I'm not within 1,000 feet. But I feel like if everyone else has to wait for the, for the findings to come back and what's, what's approved and how we want the area developed, then I don't understand why we're playing favorites and letting this one go forward. I think they need to wait with everybody else. The Planning Commission recommended a delay. They know what they're doing. That's a commission we all rely on and I think we should listen to them. I feel like there were multiple people, eight to two, so we should wait. There's no reason to shut, to approve it just kind of on its own ahead of everybody else and getting the advantage of being first, not having to participate in any sort of upgrades that may be part of the larger development. The only other piece I would just say is overall the development, there's a lot coming. For one little area to be going separate or different than everybody else just doesn't feel right. And I also don't feel like there's true visibility or understanding that this one development was going kind of outside of the Planning Commission. I think most local or neighbors in southwest Durham are actually focusing on the Planning Commission meetings. And this one's kind of going off on its own, separate from the Lee, from the Lee Valley, Lee Village development. That development plan actually was delayed. There was no vote at the last Planning Commission meeting. So it was surprising that this one parcel was actually going all the way to city council tonight. So I would ask you to delay it until the, until the rest of the zoning work is done and the recommendations are done by the Planning Commission. That's it. Thanks.
That concludes all, that concludes all the persons that have signed up to speak in opposition to this, this item. The proponents have four minutes, five minutes? Five minutes?
Mr. Mayor, member of the council and ladies and gentlemen, I do want to say that we have followed the regular process and procedure from Planning Commission to the city council. Nothing has changed on that. I also want to point out that we, based on input that came both from the Planning Commission as we moved along, that is why we've made changes based on the input that occurred at that public hearing. And I think the council has always wanted developers to make sure that they are listening to the public, they are listening to the residents that are close to the neighborhoods as well as the overall city as a whole. There is not a program at this time for affordable housing. I think you will find that this particular developer, for the first time, a developer is in fact putting affordable housing in their proposal, in their rezoning. And they're doing it pretty much close to what the goals have been that the city has indicated. If I'm wrong, please correct me. But I think this is the first one of where we have the particularly committed elements to where we will do affordable housing and have a measure and means of being able to see that's carried out. So I do want to just, on behalf of, of my client, to point out that we are going to work and we have been working to pull this together to where it can be something that the city can look to. Now, the other developers coming down the line, they're probably not going to like this. But we have tried to address it and you know Charlie, that's why you're shaking, shaking your head. They're not going to like this because it sets a precedent. It sets an affordable housing precedent here in Durham. And we are not getting incentives for this that you usually will have in your program once it's set up. We're doing this voluntarily on our own through our initiative. And through the initiative, quite frankly, the public who has spoken very candidly about what we need to do here in Durham on affordable housing. Thank you.
Are there other questions or comments? I'm not, I'm not going to close the public hearing. I'm going to bring this matter back before the council for questions that any of you may have. And I'd like to recognize any council members that have questions first. Mayor Protem, Councilwoman Gillian Johnson.
Good evening. One of our speakers suggested that you do the affordable housing in phase one. Could you come to the mic, please, and speak to that?
Thank you. This was a topic of much discussion before the Planning Commission at both of our hearings. What I hope to explain tonight, I'm going to, I'm going to first give you one answer and then if we need to kind of dive into the weeds, we can do that after. We believe that by offering affordable housing units in the second residential phase, we're creating a win-win situation for both the city and our firm. Namely, the affordable housing units we are committed will be the first affordable housings offered by a private developer in the city of Durham since the affordable housing goal was adopted. We understand that the city is working diligently to develop and adopt a program. And even though that program isn't in place today, you and the residents of Durham don't want to miss an important opportunity to make positive steps towards the city's goal. We believe offering affordable housing units in our second residential phase is a win-win because we are providing Southwest Durham with affordable housing units in a new apartment of community and we're also giving the city the time to adopt its affordable housing program. That's, that's my high-level answer to that question. I've tried to describe at Planning Commission and to some of you before this, that our company's done affordable housing units, 700 of them, in 23 communities across the country since the recession, so just this cycle. All of those units were in cities with an adopted program, all of them. We have not yet built in a city without an adopted program. Our firm, our financial partner, and our construction lender believe it is essential to comply with all the rules and regulations of adopted city programs and policies. By offering the units in our phase two residential component, we hope to allow the city time, sufficient time to develop and adopt a program. It's vitally important that we're able to get an annual certification. Without a program, the city can't give us that. You can see by the text that we've crafted, we have even volunteered to provide the data to you to prove that we're in compliance until you have a program in place where you can tell us we're not in compliance. We've also offered to pay a penalty. Again, that's probably going to be a part of a program that you'll have someday in the future. So we're trying to think through all the really important steps that would normally be present in a city in an adopted program and trying to give those to you now. It's, it's really important for us to be able to work within the rules and within the regulations and to be able to get certifications. And we're really stepping out on a limb here and taking quite a risk for our company. It's a, each phase is a $50 million project and you're asking us to go to those that have invested in the project and those who will be loaning us the money. And they'll just have to take our word that we're in compliance with the city's policy because there is no policy yet. But I think if you would allow us to do these units in phase two, there will be a program in place and we will be able to get really the one thing that we're asking, which is an ability to play within the rules of the game and to be able to get an annual certification. I'd also like to point out that in the event you don't have a program in place by the time we get to our second phase, I'll wait for Mr. Shaw. I just, I want you all to know that if in fact there's not a program in place by the time we get to phase two, because we're adding it as a text commitment tonight to this rezoning, we will still be required to do that for you. And you still will get these units, even if it takes longer than you think for the program to be adopted and, you know, written and adopted. Thanks.
Where are some of the other cities where you've done affordable housing?
Just one second. We have constructed, we're, we're a nationwide firm. We're probably the second or third largest multifamily builder in the country. We have offices all over the country. We have built affordable housing units in Boston, Massachusetts, Elica City, Maryland, San Diego, California, Los Angeles, California, San Francisco, California, Delray Beach in Florida, the Greater Baltimore, Maryland area, Denver, Colorado, the Washington DC area, and Dallas, Texas.
Now, you said that in the event we do not have a program in place, when you have begun phase two, that you would go on and provide affordable. Why can't you do that now?
Well, we would really, we would like to ask you to do us the favor of working with us cooperatively to give us the one thing we're asking you for, which is the ability for you to get your program in place so that we can get an annual certification letter. We've talked with staff, and I'm not saying this to put them on the spot, but I, I do believe that it's not possible for them to give us an annual certification letter, a letter of compliance that says that we're doing what we're supposed to be doing if there is no program yet that outlines what we're supposed to be doing. That's a tremendous risk for an institutional firm such as ours with institutional investors. Just frankly, we, we get a construction loan, 65% of the deal. We put a lot of equity in these deals. 35% is equity. That's more than most put in their homes. So we're a very conservative developer. We invest a tremendous amount of money in the deal. But even our construction lender at 65% would like to know that we've complied with all the rules. We pointed this out at the Planning Commission and I'll just hold it up, you know, briefly. This list is in the staff report. These are all the programs that the city of Durham has in place right now that we are complying with. And you'll just see, check, 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 check the box. You know, we're a reputable developer. We try to do a good job. We try to play by the rules. And what you're asking us to do is to play outside of the rules, outside of the box. And we're doing the very best we can. And all we're asking for in exchange is that you give us a little bit of time for your program to be written and adopted and put in place so that we have a hope that by phase two, we will be able to do this and get the letters that we need. It creates a tremendous risk for our project to not be able to get that certification from the city.
Could I have one more question? What is the rationale for not having 90 units versus the others?
That's a great question and you're not going to like the answer, but I will share it with you. I think simply put, the program that the city, the goal that the city has adopted, 15% of all units at 60% AMI is not financially feasible in the city of Durham at this point in time. It just, it just isn't. This project will go away. And I can't speak for other developers, but I've been doing this since 1993 in Durham. I've brought you many communities. We've always been on the cutting edge. We've always worked with neighbors. We have always done what the city has asked and helped them meet their goals. And I can tell you, if you would trust me, the math doesn't work. It's not possible. Planning staff presented a lovely session. They've done multiple education sessions for the public. I've attended those. They've run the numbers with self-help, helping them craft those numbers. And on a deal of our size, for example, a $45 million deal, there's about a 4.5 to $5 million financial gap that cannot be met by the private developer alone. Now, if the city creates an affordable program and has a toolbox that, that provides some public funding, then we can begin to bridge that gap and bring it down. As it is tonight, what we're offering you presents a substantial financial burden to the project. And the fact that we're also giving you $1.7 million worth of roadway improvements, that we're building 3,000 square feet, not square, 3,000 feet of waterline, we're doing a tremendous amount of improvements. All of that money's going to the city of Durham, but I can't, I can't do both. I can't, I can't do a lot of affordable units and $1.7 million worth of roadway improvements. It's just, it's just too taxing on one, one deal. And I think going forward, if you guys could, would consider working with the multifamily community, myself and other developers with the local firms here, many of whom are national as well, would be able to help, help you look at our numbers and understand what we can afford to do and which types of incentives are the most meaningful to us and the most helpful for us. We've offered that, but it wasn't really appropriate given that we're in rezoning to get involved in that process right now. And I've spoken with some of the council members. We'd be thrilled to do that. I've been here a long time. We've developed here a long time and we will continue to be here for a long time. We fully believe in affordable housing, but it's, it's very difficult on the finances of a project. And so what I've offered you, I believe, is as far as we can take it, given the roadway improvements and make this project work. Thank you.
Recognize Councilwoman Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a general statement and a few questions for Steve Medlin, if you don't mind. So first, I just want to say, I want to thank you all for adding the affordable housing to this plan. I think it's an important, it's an important first step. I agree with the community folks that we really need to be pursuing our goal of 15%. And I, right now, I think that it's going to be very difficult for us to get there if we approve plans that don't include significant amounts of affordable housing. I think I agree with you in that there needs to be a program in place in order for developers to really take advantage of some of the resources and opportunities that the city could put in place around affordable housing. But I think I would argue that that means that we need to wait a little bit longer to get our plan in place before we would approve a rezoning for this area near the city. a rezoning for this area near the transit station. And so I wanted to, but I wanted to ask... And I think that, so when I spoke to Steve before, we were looking at a several-year length of time to get the design district in place, but I think the affordable housing plan will actually be ready much sooner than that. We have a consultant working on it right now, and we're scheduled to get a presentation on it next month, and so I think the city will be able to have options ready in a much more reasonable timeframe than waiting until 2020 or 2021 for the design district. But I was also concerned about the rezoning for the design district, so I wanted to ask you, Steve, if you think that the design district standards for Lee Village would be significantly different from downtown or from Ninth Street, and if, if the city were to commit the resources that you need to make this happen, what is the, what is the fastest that we could get that online?
Steve Medlin with Planning Department. First, the design standards. Let me first clarify that the area in question is actually in the suburban transit area already. As a site in the suburban transit area, they have the option of developing under the design standards, and that's what they've elected to do, which means that, as was stated by the applicant, they're bringing the buildings closer to the street, creating a build-two versus set-back from the right-of-way. They've tried to integrate components that make it more of a human-scale development when you're at the street level in terms of trying to, to activate that, that frontage. But having said that, I will tell you, at this point, the design districts are significantly different from downtown to Ninth Street, and we would envision that each of the remaining five compact neighborhood areas would have to be evaluated individually to determine what are the appropriate design district standards. But I would think that they would be somewhat consistent with what you're seeing in the Ninth Street area to a great deal, simply because, for those of you that are familiar with the design district, you realize that that is composed of three sub-districts. You have your pedestrian core area, your support one and your support two areas. Obviously, the area in question here is not going to be in the core, but it's going to be closer to the support two or even the support one designation. So what we would envision is what they have proposed would be somewhat consistent with what you're seeing. In terms of timeline, though, for those of you that serve on Joint City County, you're already aware of this, we did an initial discussion at our last meeting, and the body asked us to elevate the design districts to the extent that we can within our work program. We have gone back, we are going to propose, and I want to be very clear, that none of this has been vetted through the managers' offices or through the budget process at this point. But we are going to propose elevating three of our design districts to move forward in this next fiscal year, beginning in July 1st of this year, that would be inclusive of both Patterson Place, Lee Village, and one additional one. In order for us to do that, we're having to move some things around and potentially ask for additional resources to be able to do that. But having said that, as I mentioned to you, council member, the fastest timeline, we're going to be able to get a design district from start to finish, honestly, would be three years from the time that we begin that, that effort. So at this point, we would envision that we're looking at roughly a three-and-a-half-year period before we would actually have the design district in place, potentially in the Lee Village area.
Thank you. Yeah, so I do recognize that that's a very long delay for you all, and I don't think that, I think that this proposal is a very good proposal. I think that it hits a lot of what we want in this area in terms of density, walkability, pedestrian access, that I think, I think that this proposal is very much what we are looking for. I, I think that where I would like to compromise is to say that I, I would like you all to, I would like to wait to approve this project until our affordable housing plan is in place, because I think that that will help, that will help us figure out how to help you provide more units getting closer to our goal, and that that would be a reasonable way to move forward on this issue. I really think that it's not the proposal, I really enjoyed your presentation, I really, I think that it's, you know, it's a great proposal, it's a great development, but that the timing really is the issue, and that I, I, I hear you on not having a plan and not having the incentives that you need to make the deal work, and I want us to try to make that happen.
Recognize Councilwoman Moffett. You did have a hand, Don.
Mr. Medlin, every piece of property in Durham has a right for some development on it. What's the by-right development on this property now?
The current zoning on these properties are RS-20, which would be a single-family residential district, basically at the equivalency of two units to the acre, give or take, with a portion of the site which is to the south, which is currently zoned O.I. with a development plan that is being included in this mixed-use development, that would be entitled to develop under that development plan's intensity.
Okay, don't, don't walk away. Ms. Anderson, you can just nod your head. Do you all own the property? Okay, so the, they obviously have an option on the property, if the zoning fails, then the option, and they're not able to extend the option beyond its current option period, and the current owner decides to develop it in keeping with its by-right development, can you give an opinion on how well that fits with our long-range vision for this area?
I would simply say because the area is within the suburban transit area, the development at RS-20 density would not be consistent with our long-range vision for what we would like to see in this area. Actually, the density would be substantially low and not supportive of either light rail system or ultimately the intensity or density that we would like to see in the area.
So I was going to ask if it's, if the current owner or somebody else who acquires the property develops it in its by-right development, the applicant has proffered a number of committed elements which go with the development plan and go with the zoning, but if this zoning fails and it's developed in its by-right, which of those committed elements can we expect to be, which of those committed elements will be part of that by-right development?
None of them.
So no affordable housing?
That's correct.
No improvements to road systems?
That is correct.
So, Ms. Anderson, you said that we need to take your word on that this project couldn't support more affordable housing, but we don't actually need to. We have a consultant, Karen Latta with Enterprise, and she's made presentations to us and made specifically that point, that affordable housing, where affordable housing is created, it creates a funding gap because the income stream from the market rate rents can't cover the cost of developing the project. So, and I know from my courses in economics that every time you've added an affordable unit to your project, that that has to be covered by the higher rents on the remaining units in the project. So I, I think that what I, what I hope to see, what I've realized in thinking through this project, is that, that one of the places that we need to get to is public investment, that we need to really be thinking about, how do we do the kind of financial incentives that we do in order to encourage the kind of development that we want downtown? For example, how do we use that same kind of, that same kind of approach to encourage what we want to see in other areas? And, because there's a, there's a funding gap that has to be closed, according to our consultant, by public investment, and that's how we're going to get to 15%. The concern that I have about this application, should it fail, is what happens instead? Because it's never this or something better, it's this or something else. And in the time that I spent on the planning commission and considering cases, many cases like this, not with, with the same issues, but the question was always, is what, is what we're looking at substantially more beneficial to the city than if what's currently in place? And that's the, sort of the, the, that's the rating system, I've lost the term, I'm sorry, but the metric that I'm using tonight to think about this project. Thank you.
Don, you, you've, you've really almost taken the words out of my mouth to a certain extent on this development. When Larissa asked all those who are in support of affordable housing to stand, I could have stood, because I'm not going to take a backseat to anyone in terms of my support for affordable housing in this community. So I understand affordable housing, I understand the issues we're going through with. But I also understand that, and Don has given it very clearly, we haven't been able to come up with a tool, we have not been able to come up with a tool that will encourage affordable housing at the rate that we would like to see it. Now, I would also remind you that this is a goal, it doesn't mean it's in concrete that we've got to have 15%, it's the goal. And some places it may apply, and some places it might not apply. And, you know, I've looked at these other areas where we have transit stops in terms of, Don used the term "by right" in terms of how the zoning is now. You know, people have a right to go in and develop the project right now at the R-20 rate, don't do any road improvements, don't do anything. It meets the owner of the property's goal, but it's not going to meet our goal in terms of trying to have high density around transit stops. So at some point in time, we've got to talk about compromises, or either we've got to talk about putting the city money into filling that gap. That's the only way it's going to happen, because we haven't been able to come up with enough creative tools to get to the point where we need to be. So, for me, I, I don't know what a delay is going to do, I'm certainly willing to support a delay if you think we might be able to do something different. But, you know, the type of projects, we're talking about quality development in our community. We're talking about having high density around transit stops. We're talking about being able to provide affordable housing in those high-density areas, in those transit stops. But somebody's got to pay for that, and if the council's willing to fill that gap, that's another way to make it happen. But right now, I, I haven't heard that. So I think we've got to be realistic and pragmatic when we talk about goals and aspirations for affordable housing in this community, where we want it, and what we're talking about. Some people have talked about Chapel Hill, but Chapel Hill's talking about 80%, okay? You know, our goal is 60% AMI. That's another gap that's got to be filled somehow. And unless we've got the tools to do that, I think we will put ourselves in a position that nothing happens at the scale we want it to do, and the things that can happen that we have no control of is not what we're going to want. Again, I don't want to sound like a broken record, but I think Don has made it very clear, at least from my perspective, as to what alternatives are. So I, I'll pause now and let my other council persons speak on that, but I recognize Councilman Reese and Councilman Davis and anybody else.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a couple of questions for Mr. Medlin. You're on the spot again, Mr. Medlin. Councilmember Moffett asked sort of what the development by right was on that property, and you mentioned that if the development were, if the property were developed in that way, that it would not be consistent with our future plans for that particular area. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Can you, I think this analysis has been done, can you talk, can you tell me what percentage of the available area within that transit zone is occupied by this particular property?
Sure, the, the actual percentage is fairly low, it's less than 5% of the total future compact neighborhood area. And in fact, the residential component of the mixed-use development is even less than that, it's a little over 3.5%.
Thank you. I just wanted to point that out, I understand the concern about if not this, what else is going to happen to this property? And I think that's incredibly valid, and it's been brought to our attention by the proponents a couple of times and by other folks who've looked at this issue. But I just want to, want to respond to that point by saying, even in the quote-unquote "worst-case scenario," if it were developed the way it is able to be developed by right, we're talking about a tiny, tiny fraction of what's in this particular zone. I say that not to discount how disappointing that might be if this city council were to deny the rezoning request and the property owner were to develop 40 single-family homes in that spot within a half-mile radius of the, of the future light rail transit stop. That would not be a positive development or design outcome. But I just wanted to point out that it's not like this is a third of the district or a quarter of the district, we're talking about 3% of the residential, less than 5% of the real property within that district. And since I have the microphone, but I don't have any other questions, let me just say that I, I very much want to associate myself with the comments that my colleague, Councilmember Johnson, made tonight. You know, we just went through an election period where every candidate who ran for city council couldn't talk loudly enough about their commitment to making sure that this city remains affordable for working families. And I don't, I understand the financial implications of the kind of commitment that our goal puts in front of developers. And, but I, when I look at this particular project, I balance that particular issue against the incredible work that this development team has put into putting together a proposal that I do believe is unprecedented in the city of Durham. I don't believe there's been a private developer who has put affordable units on the table in, in the way that this developer has. I don't, this is the first one of these I've been through, so I don't have much, much by way to compare it with, but I have to say, I can't imagine a developer working harder over the last month or so, two months, to try to come up with something that would satisfy members of the city council. And I'll just let you know that I received an email from Deborah Anderson at 7:08 PM Saturday night, that was about three or four pages of addressing concerns that had been raised in the community, but that's absolutely fine. And the committed elements that are part of this project are something that would really benefit that, that intersection. But I think when we balance the, those forces against each other, the other thing that comes into play for me is something that's associated with the, with the written comments that were submitted by Commissioner Tom Miller at the Planning Commission meeting. And his point was that we are just embarking on the process of figuring out, as a city, from a planning perspective, what we want these design districts around the light rail stops to look like. We are just in, beginning the process of reaching out to the people who live closest to these stops to figure out what they want to see there, what do we want to see from an urban planning perspective? And to approve a project with this many residential units into a, into a spot that isn't particularly close to the stop, in any event, it's, it's on the outside edge of the, of the radius, but also it's just so large compared to what else is there, isn't just putting the cart before the horse in some ways, unless the cart is a fire engine and the horse is a Shetland pony. We have the opportunity here, as, as Tom said, this is a fairly clean canvas at the Lee Village area, and there's no need to spoil the work that we have before us before we even wet our brushes. And so I, those are the considerations that I, that I have to make when it comes for a vote, and I'm all done, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you.
Recognize Councilman David.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to have the attorney for the applicant to talk a little bit about the traffic issue that you talked about, and could you give us a summary for the benefit of the people who have not necessarily been privy to that information?
And would you like a summary of the improvements that we're making?
The, the proposals that you put forth in terms of traffic issues, yes.
Yes. And Caitlin, I may have given you that list.
Road improvements, those kind of things you're talking about?
Yes, just one second, sorry. Got it. Hold on to your horses. Farrington Road, Highway 54 interchange, these are the improvements that we propose at that interchange. For NC 54, we'll be extending the existing eastbound left-turn lane on NC 54 at Farrington, constructing an exclusive westbound right-turn lane on NC 54 at Farrington, constructing an exclusive eastbound right lane on NC 54 at Farrington, modifying traffic signals as necessary. On Farrington Road, we'll be constructing a concrete island from NC 54 to Cleora, constructing an exclusive northbound left-turn lane on Farrington at Cleora, exclusive northbound left-turn lane on Farrington at proposed-site driveway, an exclusive northbound left-turn lane on Farrington at Rutgers, a second southbound left-turn lane on Farrington at NC 54, a four-foot bike lane for the full frontage of the site, one bus pullout, concrete pad, shelter and bench, sidewalking. On Cleora Street, which is, runs right through the middle of the project, we'll be upgrading to the hire of NCDOT or Durham Public Street Sanders with a three-lane section, four-foot bike lanes... with a three-lane section, four-foot bike lanes on both sides, curb and gutter on both sides, five-foot sidewalk on both sides. For Crescent, which is around the western length of our site, we'll be upgrading to the higher of NC DOT or Durham Public Street Sanders. A two-lane section, a four-foot bike lane on both sides, curb and gutter on both sides, and a 10-foot multi-use asphalt path on the site side of the road, which would be appropriate for bicycles, strollers, walkers. You can set up a two-directional traffic. On Rutgers, which is the northern edge of our property, and by the way, Crescent and Rutgers currently are dirt roads. Partially impassable, despite the fact they're in the city. We will be upgrading Rutgers to the higher of NC DOT or Durham Public Street Sanders. It will be a three-lane section, four feet for bike lanes on both sides, five-foot curb and gutter on both sides, a 10-foot multi-use path on the site side. We'll also be providing a cross-access connection via adjacent parcels to the south, which will go south of the project into the 54 service road. Because you know there's, there is a service road there that services people. Roughly, that's about $1.7 million worth of road improvements. And I think it will be incredibly helpful, not only obviously for our project, but for all of the other retail and hotel and office uses that are there at that intersection for people working in Chapel Hill, commuting between Chapel Hill and Durham and the RTP. It'll be really helpful.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask other, I'm sorry, were you asking? Where'd he go? Patrick. While Patrick is coming back, I guess, another, I guess, point to be made, at least from my perspective. The 15 percent is not a policy, it's a resolution that this council passed. And the 15 percent, in my understanding, was for each unit that was being proposed to be developed. So this might be a small part of the larger piece. But the issue that I think was for us, if you're going to develop a unit, the goal was to have 15 percent below 60 percent AMI. That was the goal. And I'll just come back again to my point that I think we need to be pragmatic in terms of when we're trying to impose these requirements on developers in terms of what we're going to be able to get. Unless we're prepared to have a tool that's going to provide that, or we're going to put some money into it ourselves. So I'll leave it at that and recognize the mayor pro temp for a question with the city attorney.
I just wanted to get some clarity from the city attorney on whether or not we can require affordable housing in this rezoning case.
Madam Mayor, and again, when you say require affordable housing, I'm assuming no toolbox, we're not providing incentives, or bringing anything to the table, but just an absolute requirement that 15 percent, or else I don't think you've got the legal authority to do that.
Recognize Councilman Moffett and Councilwoman Johnson.
I have a few questions, a few thoughts. Mr. Medlin, one of the things that's been asked is, can we, why don't we delay this until we have some decisions made? And I understand you say two to three years minimum for the tier, for the neighborhood.
Design district.
For the compact neighborhood tier. What about affordable housing, the toolbox, the guidelines, any ideas on that?
Mr. Moffett, that's coming through the Department of Community Development.
Thank you, I'm sorry, I appreciate that correction.
So Mr. Medlin may not know that. We do anticipate, you know, coming back to the council, I believe, in the month of March with a preliminary assessment. And Mr. Chadwell could probably confirm, you know, the phase two of that would be the implementation guidelines, what the timing of that might be.
Keith Chadwell, City Manager's Office. The manager is absolutely correct. Your first report will be preliminary. That will offer council an opportunity to give us guidance to enter into an implementation phase, which at this time is scheduled for another six to nine months, depending on the amount of work that comes out of the reaction to phase one.
Reasonably earliest you're talking about is the beginning of next year.
That's great, sir.
Right, thank you. I want to note, one of the things that Mr. Savara pointed out is there is no protected affordable housing in this area now. And I want to talk, let me, I have, excuse me, I have a question for you, Ms. Anderson, which is, phase one, phase two, I'm assuming that you do have, you're talking about your lenders and so forth, that you're set to go on phase one finances. Is that also true for phase two?
Yes.
Okay. Not as any kind of committed element, but would you consider looking at your financing in phase two and look at how public investment might increase the amount of affordable housing that could be offered there?
Well, one thing that we put in the text commitment that we handed to you tonight was that we would not be prohibited from participating in any incentives that the city develops between now and then. That's a little bit of self-preservation on my part, I admit. But it is also in keeping with my belief that, you know, in the next year or so, you will have a program in place. And we would need to move forward with phase one in order to continue to control the land. But we have time on phase two. Phase two is scheduled to follow about a year later, and that's almost exactly what we need, which is why we've stepped up, and hopefully that will work.
So my comments now, thank you. My comments now is that there are two things that density do for us. The first is, is that funding for the rail system is going to hinge in part on what's developed around the rail system. Developing a station in an empty area is not going to be as attractive to the, in the process, as actually having people in the area who can use the system, as well as employment centers. Both of those are important. The second thing that any supply does for us is it lowers the market rate. It's a basic economic premise, is that supply and demand set the market rate. And the more supply that we have, the lower the market rate. And that is an important part of what we should be thinking about as we look at projects like this. This is just further thinking. Thank you.
Recognize Councilwoman Johnson.
Any other comments by councilmembers?
Let me, I had one more thing I wanted to say, which is that because of what I was talking about, the importance of density, the idea of bringing development to a halt around our rail stations for the next one to three years is not one that I'm willing to contemplate.
I can recognize Councilman Schul.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So just a couple of comments. One is, I think that I don't want people to go away thinking that we can require 15 percent affordable housing anywhere. We have it as a goal, and it's a really important goal, and we need to try to achieve it. But unfortunately, in, for example, some of the cities that you mentioned, probably all of them, I don't know, there are inclusionary zoning ordinances, or other kinds of ordinances, where you can require developers to include a certain amount of affordable housing. We don't have that in North Carolina because of our state legislature, I wish we did. So I don't think we'll ever have that program in the sense that you were talking about it. You know, I think we will have, I know we will have, toolbox of incentives. We actually have incentives now, they haven't persuaded any developers to use them yet. But I do think that that program will be there, but I don't think we'll ever have, because of our, ever. Until we change our state legislature, I don't think we'll have the kind of, sort of, you know, we require X number of units, we ask you to certify that you have them, and that you have a program in place that... So, and that does make it very difficult for us to achieve our 15 percent goal. And I think that for all of you all here, and for all of us who are thinking about affordable housing, I think a lot of it, when you think about it, is how do we do that without that, without that requirement that we're able to put on developers? Because that's the way it's done a lot of places. So we're stuck, we fall back on, either, in this case, the goodwill of developers and/or our own public resources. And that could include land downtown. It includes the penny for housing and any other tax dollars we might put in there. It includes our federal money that we get for housing and that sort of thing. And I'm appreciative of the fact that you all did make this, that you all did make this proffer on affordable housing. And I do think it's significant that you did it, and I'm appreciative of it, and that you've guaranteed the affordability for 25 years. I also want to say that, you know, in terms of people thinking somehow that you all are kind of ahead of the process and shouldn't be, I want to say it's, you're certainly, you have followed the process that we have. We have a process that, you've been in the queue for a long time. And it is the process that we have, and it's the process you should have followed. You followed it, and I have no problem with that, and I don't think anyone else should have any either. It's not like you're sneaking in here under the deadline with your proposal, your proposal's been in the queue for years. So to me, you know, to me, so what I would say to the developer is, we have, our obligation is to public interest, not to your interest. They can come together sometimes, but they're not, they're not, they're never totally consonant. And so when I think about this, I think about what is the public interest here? And there are lots of different factors. I mean, Don mentioned the transit, I think that's not insignificant. If we're going to make the transit succeed, we need density around the transit stations. And the success of the transit means affordable transportation for people who live in affordable housing. So it's complicated. So to me, what this is, is kind of a bet. That is to say, is the bet, the bet I would have to be making, that I would, that I think about for myself is, would we, will the, what are the chances that, or let me put it like this, should we take the chance that the underlying landowner will be willing to look forward to three years from now, when we have a compact neighborhood district, and want to develop densely there? Where they'll be able to put in a lot of square footage, develop with a lot of density, and without a lot of regulations? Because when we go to the compact neighborhood district, design districts, then there's less legislative ruling, and there's a lot more that you just get by right or by working with our, with our, with our planning staff. You get permissions there, not from us, not at the same extent. So would a developer who owns a prime piece of land in that situation want to wait until that time? Or would they rather go ahead now and develop the 40, or whatever it is, 28, I can't remember the exact number, single-family homes in that area? I will say that even though it's a very small part of the, of the total compact design district, one of the things that single-family homeowners bring with them is opposition to density next to them. And so I do want to make that, also remind people of that as well. This is a universal phenomenon, and increasing the number of single-family homes, I think, if that, if, if, if that part of the bet wins, that will increase the opposition to density there, and that's often effective. So I think it's a close call. And I appreciate, again, the developer's offer of the, of the housing, affordable housing. I do think that there's a lot to recommend the, a lot to recommend the development other ways too. But I also think that for the, for the future, if we can wait until the design district is ready, and if that week, and if, if the bet is correct, that the landowner would rather hold on for a large, dense development, then I think that's worth doing. And I'm thinking about what that is in the next two minutes. So thank you.
Let me, Steve, I appreciate your comments, I appreciate all the comments. I don't want to singlet any one councilman out of the oven. But I guess I'm back to where I started. I chair TTA boards, I understand very deeply what FT is looking for in terms of transit stops and the type of density that they want around them. I understand that they want affordable housing, would like to see affordable housing. But they haven't said what the percentage needs to be. But it's very clear that they want the ridership, and the way you get ridership, you have density. And for me, this project provides the density. I'm willing to take the bet. I don't think we're going to come up with a tool, personally, without putting some public dollars into it, that's going to allow the type of density we think we need around these transit stops. I've been sitting here a long time, been waiting for the tool. You've heard how long it's going to take the tool to come. I don't think we're going to get a tool unless we put the dollars into it, public dollars into it. And maybe that's what we're going to hear from our consultant. My sense is that, I haven't asked the staff to look at this text amendment that's been, have you had a chance to look at this text amendment that was just passed out to us? Steve?
Staff has reviewed the text that has been proffered by the applicant and reviewed it for enforceability.
You have any comments on that?
No, we feel it, we feel it's appropriate, if the council's willing to accept it.
This is a small part of a larger track. But I think it's an opportunity for us to have density assured at the site. I think it's an opportunity to have a level of affordable housing in it. And again, I remind us that we're talking, we're talking about a goal. We understand that you've got to have 15 percent, that's the goal. I would like to see it higher, I'd like to see it 15 percent. But I think at this point in time, given where we are, Steve's made the point that, you know, I think the developers have followed the outline that we've outlined for them, the whole process. This is not an overnight-type deal that they're coming to us with. I'm comfortable with what they're proposing, I would support it. I would also support a delay, if you think you're going to get any more by having a delay. But beyond that, I'm supportive of what's been presented for this proposal at this particular site. Going to pass it on to anyone else that has comments on it. Recognize Councilman Moffett, Councilman Schul, and Councilman Davis.
One of the things I wanted to, I just, I just wanted to lift up the members of the Coalition of Affordable Housing and Transit. Your work is really essential to the efforts that all of us are engaged in. I stand with the mayor, as we all do, when he said no one can take, he won't take a backseat to anybody on support for affordable housing. But I don't doubt that the fact that we've gotten to the proffer that we have is, at least in part, both to the willingness of the applicant to work with the, to work with us, but it's also in part because of the hard work that the members of the coalition are doing. So I want to appreciate you all for that work.
Schul?
Mr. Mayor, my question is to, a couple of people have mentioned the possibility of delay. I wasn't sure, I'm not sure why we would do that, or if there is a reason that we might want to, that the council wants to talk about.
Again, we've talked about the report that the consultant's going to be bringing to us. And if we give her an opportunity to weigh in on this particular aspect of it, in terms of what she's going to be bringing forth, to at least get another outside opinion in terms of the reasonableness of what's being proposed versus what we'd like to see as the goal, that would be one of the reasons that I could support a delay. It's another opinion, we paying her to give us sort of roadmap on affordable housing. So that would be a reason that I could support a delay. Did it answer your question, why, for me, from my perspective?
Mr. Mayor, my question would be, would a motion to delay until that consultant's report is given be in order?
It would for me, no.
Appropriate time.
I'm just going to suggest that a motion might be to continue the public hearing to a date certain as opposed to specifying a delay.
Recognize the mayor pro temp. Recognize Councilman Moffett.
I was simply going to ask the manager, the first date certain is three... I was simply going to ask the manager, the, the first date certain is three weeks from tonight. Is that sufficient time? I, I know we're planning to hear from, in March. Will three weeks from tonight be sufficient time in order to hear the report?
I don't think so, Mr. Moffett. I certainly could have the consultant look at the proffer language, but I was thinking it might make sense to continue the, the public hearing, to say the, the first council meeting in April, something like that. That would give you the full month of March to receive the report and consider any, any, I, I don't, I'm trying to think, the council meetings in March are the 15th, or the 5th and the 19th? Is that right?
There are implications always for this. I just want to ask the applicant, I don't know the answer to this, but the applicant, what are the implications to your options and so forth?
I appreciate that deferral would allow there to be more time for discussion. I believe that we have put our best offer on the table tonight. We've been in this process, we submitted February 9th, 2015. We've been in the process for over a year. There is a limit to my underlying land contract. And I do also believe that we have put our best offer on the table, and I would respectfully request a vote this evening unless it could be made clear to me what I can or should work on during the deferral. We lost 60 days at Planning Commission for a deferral without clear direction as to what we should do. And granted, that time gave us time to talk with a lot of people, and I, we would love to have a vote this evening, but if that's not your pleasure, I understand.
Answer your question. Who else had a question, comments? If not, then I entertain a motion on...
May I speak?
Sure, Larissa.
Before we close the public hearing, I gave up my time.
Why aren't you closing the public hearing?
Oh, thank you. But I would like to answer then that question, because I did give up my time for Mr. Lee's video, because he could not be here. I would like to say that the Coalition for Affordable Housing and Transit does request that you at least wait until the March 10th Affordable Housing Plan draft is presented to you. I think there will be additional tools in that plan, but you already have tools, and we have a list of them. In the flyer we handed out, building homes, affordable homes with a density bonus, there is a developer that's come through planning who's already proffered that, or, or has asked to be able to get the additional density with affordable housing on the site that he has brought forward to the Planning Commission. Accepting Durham Housing Authority vouchers, you can, you have a contract with that, with annual certification. Partnering with nonprofit affordable housing groups like Durham Affordable Housing Coalition, which from 1985 to when we, the city stopped funding, that out-of-house did annual certifications for private developers who received city funds. At that time, it was bond funds, but now it's general funds. They could also use those affordable housing funds that you have dedicated to affordable housing and get an annual certification. And I am sure that Karen Lotto has many more, but I will submit this into the record and respectfully request that you give us that time. I do want to reiterate, we only heard about these 10 units of affordable housing for people at 60 percent of area median income when you heard it, and we have not had time to talk about it among ourselves or with the developer. Thank you.
Thank you, Larissa. Again, given the timeframe, again...
Mr. Mayor, I would recommend that the public hearing be continued until March the 21st and confirm that's a council meeting night.
It's the 21st, a council meeting night? That's the question.
Mayor Bell, do you, you all have a calendar right there?
21st?
Third Monday.
Okay, so it's a council meeting night? Okay.
By then, you will, you, I believe, will have heard the, the presentation, or at least have seen the preliminary information on the Affordable Housing Plan, and you can always, could always continue the public hearing further from that point, but at least that would be the, probably the earliest reasonable opportunity.
And in the meantime, relative to the developer, I would hope that the developer would also have access to consultant to review what's being proposed. Do you understand that? You would also have access to the consultant to review your plan in terms of what she comes forth with?
I do think it presents, if we look a little bit further down the road, I appreciate that you'll be getting recommendations in March. But until a program is in place and the city has decided what their incentives will be, I'm still in the position I'm in today, where I'm volunteering this completely at my own cost. And I don't think that there would be financial incentives available to me for at least a year, and I, I, this project will, will not still be here any year.
I understand that.
Okay.
The purpose of allowing the time, allowing for you to have the discussion with the consultant would be further confirmation as to whether your approach is realistic in terms of what you're asking for and the timeframe you're asking for, and given the fact that we don't have the tools at that particular time. So that's all we're looking for. Recommend, recognize Councilman Reese.
Is this an appropriate time for a motion, Mr. Mayor? I'd move to continue the public hearing to a date certain on March 21st, consistent with the city manager's recommendation.
It's been properly moved and second. Further discussion, recognize Councilman Moffett.
Yes, I just want to say that, in sitting here thinking about, I, I understand, I understand the desire to get more information, but realizing that on March 21st, we'll be facing the same decision, which is, is this project better than the current zoning by right? I'll be voting against this motion.
Thank you. Further discussion. Here now, I'm going to call the question. Madam Clerk, will you open the vote, please? And close the vote.
It passes six to one with Councilmember Moffett voting no.
Thank you. Move to item 28, Unified Development Ordinance Text Amendment, ominous changes nine.
Good evening. Michael Stock with the Planning Department. Text Amendment TC 150001 proposes technical revisions and minor policy changes to various provisions of the Unified Development Ordinance, or UDO. The amendments are grouped into generally five categories. The first one is just a name change to the State Division of Water Quality, references to those name, those names within the UDO. Amendments to Section 2.5 and to remove duplicative standards that are already found in Rules of Procedure and the interlocal agreement regarding Historic Preservation Commission, Section 3, and changes to Section 3.16, the Historic District Landmark Designation Process, and removing unnecessary plan requirements. Third section is amendments that are typically just technical clarifications or reorganization or corrections. Fourth section are amendments that reflect more minor policy changes rather than solely technical in nature. And a fifth section, which is a couple amendments to Paragraph 533N, which are your wireless communication facilities regulations that were looked into upon the adoption process of text amendment TC 1200013. The Planning Commission recommended approval at its November meeting, 10 to 1. The Board of Commissioners will consider this text amendment at its March 14th meeting. There have been revisions to the set of amendments before you that have been made subsequent to the Planning Commission meeting, and those, and those have been discussed in more detail within your report. Two changes I do want to bring to your attention that are more significant in nature, and those were brought about through the discussions at council's work session back on January 21st, and also the Board of Commissioners' work session on February 1st. The first is revisions to the initiation of the local historic district in Section 3.16, and that's page six on your attachment, which revised further, which was revised further to try to clarify the text itself, but to also remove the 25 percent petition minimum. And additionally, staff referenced text by the, proposed by the Coalition of Affordable Housing and Transit by modifying the intended purpose section in, in the UDO in Section 1.2, and that's page 37 of your attachment, by adding intense statements regarding encouragement of affordable housing and promotion of equity and social economic diversity. Staff also added text emphasizing that these were intense statements of the UDO and not actual regulations themselves. As a reminder, city council will be required to take two actions. The first action will be the vote on the ordinance amending the UDO, and that's Attachment A in your agenda packet. And the second action will be the appropriate statement of consistency, which is Attachment B in your packet. I'll be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
You're welcome. This is a public hearing. The public hearing is open. I would ask first other questions by the council, the staff report. There's one person that has signed up to speak on this item, Ms. Susan Miller. Is she present?
Yes, I'm sorry, I meant to specify, section number 29.
Okay. All right. Is there anyone else that wants to speak on this item? If not, let the record reflect, no one else asked to speak. I will declare the public hearing closed. Madam Clerk, before the council. It's been properly moved and second. Recognize Councilman Moffett.
Just because I'm tilting at windmills tonight, and because I've served as the liaison to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission for quite some time, and because I think that their requests are reasonable and have not been adopted, I'll simply be voting against tonight's motion.
Thank you, Councilman Moffett. Any other questions? Most of them called, and second, Madam Clerk, will you open the vote? And close the vote.
I pressed the wrong button. I'm voting no.
Okay. It passes six to one with Councilmember Moffett voting no.
Item 29.
Mr. Mayor, as indicated, the, oh, I'm sorry, you had...
Sorry, does he consistently? I apologize. I'm sorry.
It's been properly moved and second.
Madam Clerk, will you open the vote? And close the vote.
It passes seven to zero.
Recognize the city manager on item 29.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 29 is the ordinance revising and establishing certain fees for underground utility installations. And this, the purpose of this item is to conduct the public hearing to consider the adoption of an ordinance to revise and establish certain fees by the City Department of Public Works for Underground Utility Installations. Wanted to report to the council that following the discussion at the work session pertaining to this matter, there was a myriad of materials that were provided to the, the council and the staff from the utility companies regarding some projections of fees associated with, you know, the inspection costs. Staff has gone back and reviewed and reconfirmed their assumptions and calculations associated with that. So I would say at this point, we'd probably, easier to define, we have a difference of opinion between the staff administration and the, of the utility companies and what the actual costs are. But I did also want to advise the council that we are continuing discussions with the utility companies. Had a conference call today during, due to the, the weather, it was difficult for us to get together. And certainly, I think Ms. Miller's here, she wants to address the council. That's fine. But would suggest that we continue this public hearing as well until the March 7th council meeting, and at that time, I'll have a recommendation.
Thank you. I will open the public hearing, and I'll recognize Ms. Miller if you have comments.
I would more than have to wait until the committee is continuing.
Okay. In that case, entertain a motion on the manager's recommendation. It's been properly moved and second. Any further question? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, will you open the vote? And close the vote.
It passes seven to zero.
Okay. We'll move now back to item 14, which was pulled. This is the cameras. This is item 14, contact, contract for the purchase of body-worn cameras for the police department. I have several people that signed up to speak on this item who pulled it. I want to make sure that we have everyone that's signed up to speak. Chris Tiffany, is Chris still here? I'm not, I'm not going to call again. I'm just trying to make sure I have everybody up there. Chris Tiffany, Rafia Saied, J. Brooks, Leslie, Marik, David Hall, Gregory Williams, Marcus Moro. Okay, is there anyone else that had, all these items been pulled, that wants to speak on this item? Could you go to the clerk's desk and sign a card, please? So after we hear the report from Chief Marsh, we have comments heard from the audience and the council. Recognize Deputy Chief Marsh.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Deputy Chief Anthony Marsh, Durham Police Department. What you should have before you is the, what we propose as a final draft of our proposed body camera policy for the Durham Police Department. We think that it strikes a reasonable balance in all the various issues that have been raised and concerns that have been raised by the public and the officers and members of council as well. And I'm prepared to receive any questions that you all may have.
Recognize the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just for the record, the, the item for the council is actually the authorization to execute a contract to purchase, well, let me just read it, to authorize the city manager to execute a contract in an amount not to exceed $366,738 with V-View LLC for the purchase of body-worn cameras and related V-View software and services.
That is correct, Mayor. I've been working on the policy so much.
And I, I think, at least I reminded the council that our work session, when we put it on the consent agenda, that the item really was for the purchase, whether or not we're going to let the contract for purchasing the, the cameras, not, wasn't the policy. But having said that, I'll first entertain comments from the council if any have comments. Otherwise, I'll go to the audience. Councilman Shul.
I do have comments, but I'm happy to, I'd like to hear from the...
In that case, Chris Tiffany and others that I called, if you can line up on the right. You have three minutes, Chris.
Thank you. Hide the evidence. Access to recordings, not things like strip searches. Eh, wrong. Public access to such evidence can stop such misconduct. Cops decide what they want to document, threatening to kill people, quick draw cops jerking out weapons all the time, according to Lopez. Normal behavior, according to department spokesman. Way to get consent. The department even failing to list shootings under use of force, but you want cops to decide prior to use of force whether or not to record it? It's not even safe for cops to be fiddling with recording devices, deciding whether or not to record what might become use of force. Audio at least should be running all the time and can be easily indexed and stored. With disappeared complaints about public strip searches and body cavity searches, you can redact genitalia and blur faces. The reason public lynchings in this country are no longer as normal as cops here jerking out their guns all the time is because of the publication of photos by the NAACP showing, for example, Emmett Till and Jesse Washington. Shining light on ugly stops the ugly. Both police chiefs in council work sessions say they only have to document routine use of force face plantings against pedestrians if guilty of possession, but not against those of us who are innocent. So there's already a way for cops to get around this body cam policy. Smith said that the visual optics of physical altercations could distort reality. No matter how justified the officer's behavior may be, it just doesn't look good. That's right. Like John Hill slammed on his face at NCCU with no audio, was justified by Lopez as a textbook face plant, but cops had to be threatened by the judge to produce the silent video face plant. It was not justified. Another face plant victim searched, and like most face plant searches, he was not guilty. I have to put you down on your face, I'm going to hurt you. If you don't want it to be heard, then don't say it. And Smith brought up the example of a person who acts out while being arrested. Again, for both sides of the camera, if you don't want to be seen or heard, then don't do it. Audio could have clarified who said what, when... Audio could have clarified who said what, when, and why. The why of the civilian's behavior is unclear because, like the Tamara Rice shooting, the audio here is missing. What'd the cops say? Thanks, Steve Shul, we need presumption that these videos are public record unless there's good reason otherwise, and not the other way around. Don't be impatient. Paramilitary forces in this country report to civilians and not the other way around. Vote no until the policy is more open in the manner suggested by Steve Shul and other council members.
Thank you.
Mayor Bell. My heart is real painful tonight, so on other issues down at the jailhouse. I have served, I have given you a copy, Mr. Reese, and you a copy of a previous document that was given to Deputy Attorney, Deputy Chief, Mr. Marsh. This issue on body cameras is something that is all across the country now in light of the case of Brother Levon McDonald. A year-long delay in the release of videos showing a white Chicago police officer fatally shooting a black teenager has Illinois and other lawmakers around the country facing the same question before many states, including North Carolina. And that question is this: As officers dashboard at cameras and body cameras capture more police encounters with the public, how much access to the videos should there be under the open records law, especially here in North Carolina? On April the 14th, Mr. Marsh, I file with you, I put it in your hand personally, a copy of the public information request responding to 10 questions that I asked you. You have tall the limit with your response. You supposed to have responded to me approximately 60 days ago, under the North Carolina General Statute 132-1 subsection B, and I quote to you the letter that I sent to you at that time. Dear Deputy Chief Marsh, please be advised that I understand that law enforcement is a profession that is constantly evolving and the body camera tool is being embraced. I don't have much seconds, so I want to get to these questions quick. My question to you, to you word: Are the proposed body camera recordings part of employee's personal record? Number two, what is the long-term cost of the 90-day pilot testing program of body-worn cameras and the testing of additional models of the body-worn cameras? Number three, what would be the cost per year in storage, maintenance, and replacement costs once the program is fully in operation? I have 30 seconds. I want to get to this last question. Does the public record bill pass 1115-2 of the North Carolina General Assembly, April the 21st, 215, affect the Durham Police Department use of body cameras, including when the cameras should be activated, protecting the privacy of the citizen in footage, and how long the release must take that footage? Can a complainant seek a court order to obtain the footage? These questions were not answered. As of tomorrow, I will carry you to the district court for your refusal to respond to my freedom of information request. Thank you.
Welcome. Next speaker. And again, if you just state your name and address when you come forward, please.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jade Brooks, and I live at 918 Gilbert Street in Durham. I'm a member of Southerners on New Ground and a coordinator of the People's Alliance PAC, both of which are organizations that are part of the Fade Coalition. And so I know that many of you have gotten emails today asking you to vote no on this body, the body camera purchase tonight. I just want to, and there's a beautiful statement on that Fade wrote that's going around, but just to make it clear, these body cameras are never something that the community organizers have been asking for, right? The body cameras were a recommendation of the Human Relations Commission, but there's many other asks that community organizers working around police accountability have been making that have not been met. We have been saying in this community for years now that we need to build a culture of trust between the police and the, and the communities that we're all a part of. How will these body cameras be building a culture of trust if the police chief can delete or edit footage at will? That, to me, is not creating accountability. It's increasing a culture of surveillance. And we see that as written consent searches are going down, probable cause searches are going up in Durham. One of many demands that the Fade Coalition continues to make about how policing needs to operate in this community, I'm asking you to vote no until the body camera policy can be one that reflects this culture of accountability. And we actually have resources that we can look to, to other municipalities and cities in the country that have really gone line by line and figured out, what does it mean to release the footage so the public has access to it? What does it mean to be sure that it's contained in a way that it can't be altered or deleted by police departments? So if you're committed to body cameras as one mechanism to building this culture of trust, I ask you to review those type of policies instead of the one that's been presented. Thank you.
My name is Attorney David Hall, 306 Gray Avenue, Durham. I'm here tonight as a member of the Fade Coalition. I've handed out the letter that is going around. I'm going to read that summary. I'd also like to touch on a couple of other things. The consistent goal of the Coalition fostering alternatives to drug enforcement, Fade, has been to promote accountability and transparency by the police department to the Durham community. In April 2014, the Durham Human Relations Council, responding to community outcry, quote, "Found the existence of racial bias and racial profiling practices in the Durham Police Department practices," end quote. After years of advocacy, we are still not satisfied by the response of the Durham Police Department to our core concerns. In particular, we call attention to the DPD's inadequate response to the recommendations presented to the Durham Human Rights Commission and Durham City Council, as well as other pressing matters. There has not been the fundamental change in policing behavior and culture that we see as necessary to ensure the safety and security of our communities. The written consent searches mandated by the city council are being circumvented with probable cause searches increasing. Marijuana arrests remain high, even increasing with racial disparity hardly changed. A superficial racial equity training model focusing narrowly on implicit bias has been substituted for models addressing deep-seated structural and cultural issues. The Civilian Review Board remains limited in its oversight and incapable of addressing issues of police misconduct. While data on police activity is being reported in a timely manner, the implications of the data that police behavior remains largely unchanged and is not being addressed. Fade is concerned about the direction of the search for a new police chief and the limited community involvement in that search. Fade is worried that the introduction of body cameras will not increase police accountability and transparency, but rather serve to increase surveillance of the most vulnerable communities. Body cameras need to be part of a shield protecting our communities rather than a sword against them. We have grave concerns about the use of money from asset forfeiture and controlled substance tax distribution funds to pay for the cameras. Fade challenges the unconstitutional use of tasers by DPD against nonviolent individuals as decided in a recent Fourth Circuit Court of Appeals case. Finally, Fade urges city council and people of Durham to imagine a new police culture which genuinely serves and protects rather than criminalizes and harasses our communities. I've also given you... Thank you.
We don't give up minutes. You have three minutes. We have your comments here, Mr. Hall. We don't really give up minutes. Thank you. The next speaker.
I see what went on with the other folks tonight. Thank you.
Sure. You could have finished your comments. I was just telling her we didn't really give up minutes.
I've also given you a, a article regarding civil forfeiture, which is one of the most egregious policies going. It seeks to deprive people of their personal property with no evidence and no charges of criminal behavior. I think Durham is better than that, to get behind a policy that has bipartisan support where people are losing their personal property, no evidence, no charges. I don't care if it's in conjunction with the federal policy, it is egregious. We have $1.3 million in that fund that we're using, and somehow that, that fund is going to seek to be replenished, and it's going to be replenished on the backs of our citizens with no evidence and no charges of criminal behavior. We can do better. We should seek to do better.
Thank you. If you just state your name and address, please.
My name is Leslie Nidick. I live at 1605 Hollywood Street. I'm a criminal defense attorney and a member of the PA PAC. The first thing I wanted to address was procedurally, I feel that the decision should be delayed due to the fact that the final draft of this proposed policy was not even uploaded on the website as of this morning. As far as the citizens having addressed their concerns, I don't think citizens have had a chance to read this final draft. So my first request would be a motion to delay this until more citizens have had an opportunity to read the final draft. There were other discussions with citizens, but the final draft, as far as I know, thanks to Representative Reese, who put it on his website, wasn't even up as of this morning. Should we address this this evening? I would not support a policy that has some of the current language, which puts burden on citizens to essentially prove that they have a right to what arguably is their own public record in a criminal use-force encounter, other than if there was an ongoing investigation. The language that I have seen has words such as discretion of the police, required court order, compelling public interest. Such language would arguably be unconstitutional, would put a burden on the judicial system and require citizens to unnecessarily enter the judicial realm for a court order. We can do better than this. We can have language that protects police personnel records and at the same time, give citizens the rights rather than putting a burden on a citizen. For example, the language compelling public interest normally is used when a state must have a compelling interest to silence free speech. In constitutional law, that is the standard. Yet this policy uses compelling interest to force a citizen to access what arguably is his or her own public record of an encounter already. So I'm circling back to my first request, which is to delay this discussion until we have a more thorough input, not just from the public, but perhaps from the county attorney on the language that is in this final draft. And basically, that's it. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Gregory Williams. I live at 904 West Murray Avenue here in Durham. I rise this evening echoing a lot of the comments that have already been made to oppose the motion to fund the body camera program until there is an adequate process to make the footage that these cameras are going to gather available to the public. I am here as a private citizen, but first of all, I wanted to say that I support everything that all the previous speakers said, especially those from the Fade Coalition, as well as, as well as the other speakers. I think that it is extremely important to bear in mind that where body cameras are doing any good whatsoever, it is not to help police survey communities, it is to help communities survey the police. There are issues that people have raised with body cameras more generally, but if they are doing any good, any good at all, it is not to give the police additional tools to survey communities, to surveil communities, but to give communities additional tools to surveil police. And so frankly, if this funding goes through without a policy to make the footage that these cameras would collect available to the public, there really isn't much point, in my own view. And others have previously, other speakers have already mentioned the case of Laquan McDonald, which in Chicago, and the tragic and overtly racist act of violence that took place there, and many, many, many others across this country as examples of why, quite frankly, we can't trust police departments to decide when they are going to release footage and when they're not. It's the communities, it's the community's responsibility and the community's ability as well. And the community should be trusted, not the police. We do not want the Durham Police Department to start behaving like the Chicago Police Department. Frankly, we don't want the Durham Police Department to start behaving like the Durham Sheriff's Department that's already murdered three people in the last year in the Durham County Jail by means of medical neglect. We know what happens when police power is able to operate invisibly and unaccountably, and we know that it always ends in horrific acts of violence. And I hate to put things that dramatically, but this is a dramatic situation. So I would just close by saying that I urge you to vote against this motion unless and until there is a policy that can actually get the only possible use out of body cameras, and that is to help us watch the police, not to help them watch us. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Marcus Morrow. I live at 1713 East Cornwallis Road. The reason I'm up here tonight is because I've spent about eight years in the military. I've done also time doing federal security, and that's part of what I do now, is I'm a consultant for federal security services. The biggest issue I have with this is the governance that doesn't exist behind it. Generally speaking, when someone's given something in the field of work that we do, there's a lot of governance behind it. You wouldn't expect anyone to have a can of pepper spray without knowing how to use it, when and where they're supposed to use it, how they're supposed to use it. You wouldn't do that for any piece of equipment. And it seems that there's no governance or policy in place with this for them to know when and where they should use it, how they should use it, and what times. I think with anything that we're giving to forces like this, where we haven't given them clear guidance on when they should use it, and if they should use it at all times, or what's going to be done with that footage, I think buying the cameras is a little preemptive. Thank you.
You're welcome.
My name is Susanna Birdsong, and I'm the Policy Counsel for the ACLU of North Carolina. Thanks for the opportunity to comment today. We believe that body cameras have a great potential to be a win-win for police and communities alike, both by holding officers accountable for improper actions and by protecting them from frivolous accusations of misconduct. But as with most opportunities for change, the devil is in the details. Without strong policies to guide the use of body cameras and ensure that they will promote accountability and protect privacy, it's doubtful that this technology will help bridge the divide between law enforcement agencies and the communities they serve. To that point, I just want to highlight a few areas of Durham's current policy that remain particularly concerning and that should be addressed before the city council votes to fund body cameras for the Durham Police Department. Officer discipline. Any allegation of misconduct or violation of body camera policy should be fully investigated and carry appropriate consequences. Officers who misuse or fail Officers who misuse or fail to use body cams as instructed should be disciplined, and right now, the policy contains no information regarding whether and how officers will be disciplined. I know that the Police Department has noted that officers will be disciplined according to an official department discipline policy, but in order to build trust with the community they serve, that needs to be explicitly stated in this policy. And further, not only does the policy fail to outline disciplinary consequences, it seems to reward improper use of the cameras by allowing any footage obtained in a manner not in compliance with the policy to be saved and included in the criminal investigative file. Flagged recordings. Currently, the draft policy contains a minimum default retention period of six months, and then goes on to retain any flagged recordings for up to, in felony cases, 20 years, and we think that in all instances, we would recommend shortening the length of time that recordings are maintained. And finally, on access to recordings, we continue to advocate that data gathered by the body cams, at the very least, needs to be accessible in every instance to the individuals who are recorded. We're pleased to see the addition of the language regarding the complainant to this most recent version. But in matters of public interest, including incidents involving an indication of police misconduct, there should be a process in place to release these recordings to the media and the public, with certain privacy protections in place. The latest draft of the policy continues to classify all body cam footage as either a recording of criminal investigation or as part of an officer's personnel file, and therefore not a public record, an overly broad interpretation of public records law. And while we appreciate the new language incorporated into this version of the policy stating that the chief of police, the city manager, and/or the city council may elect to release the recording, this process right now has no framework, and at the current time, it's unclear how city council and the city manager would play a meaningful role here. And so I applaud you all for your dedication to getting this right and for your efforts to date, and would encourage revisions to the current policy before voting to fund the cameras. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, is there anyone else, even though you haven't signed up, that would like to speak on this item? Anyone else? Okay, I'm going to bring the discussion back to the council and recognize, I have some comments I'm going to make, but I'm going to recognize my colleagues first, if there are persons that want to speak. Recognize Councilman Reese. Is anyone else out there? Councilman Shul? Councilman Johnson? Councilman Davis? The mayor pro tems. So you guys remember your slots. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not going to belabor the point this evening, because I think we have at least a narrow consensus among us about a path forward to a better policy. But what I will say is, first of all, I want to thank everyone who came out tonight to speak on this issue. I know it's last, it's 10 minutes after 10 o'clock, and yet you hung in there with us, and we appreciate it. I also want to thank Deputy Chief Marsh. Some of you in the room may not be aware that Deputy Chief Marsh has put more hours and effort into this project than anyone else in the city. He led a series of six listening sessions through the spring of last year to around at different parts of our city and talk to the people of Durham about what they were concerned about and what they wanted to see in a police-worn body camera program. And I believe that he has done yeoman's work in putting this policy together and trying to find an appropriate balance between the different issues involved, and I want to thank you again, as I've done in the past, because this is a huge project. I also want to thank members of the general public who came out tonight, especially folks from the Fade Coalition, folks from the Durham People's Alliance, and the ACLU of North Carolina. I think the response we saw tonight, and certainly that we've seen in our email inboxes over the last 24 hours, suggested this is an issue of deep concern of the people of Durham. I have not been shy about expressing my deep concerns about this particular draft of the policy and some of the issues that I have with the provisions. I won't belabor those points now, except to say that it's my hope that within the next several weeks, we can come to an agreement on a policy that makes sense for the people of Durham. I am a believer that the use of police-worn body cameras can make a huge difference in communities that are disproportionately impacted by violence, and I think there are some studies out there that, although not definitive, do establish a reason for hope that the deployment of police-worn body cameras can significantly reduce incidents of use of force by police officers, and I think that's ultimately the goal we all have from this policy. But until we can come together as a city council and with the Police Department and the city manager to find a better solution, I think we'll end up delaying the consideration of this contract. And actually, again, I want to thank everyone for being here so late. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Shul.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I really appreciate everybody being here and for your comments and for taking so seriously this very serious, very serious matter. Also want to thank you, Chief. You have, I think the process that we've gone to get the draft of the general order and to work through the experiments that you all did with the various cameras, and the extent of the public involvement you've had has really been exemplary, and I just wanted to thank you for that, and others in the department as well. But you've been the leader of it, and I'm really grateful. I have, I wrote my colleagues earlier today asking that we delay this until our next meeting, so we can talk about it again, and I'm going to just go over why I think, what I still think are problems with the general order. It is, we are approving a contract here tonight, or next time we meet. Not, we council members don't write the general orders, our administration does that, but I do think that there's some work that the general order needs, and before we vote on the contract, I would like to have us do some of that work. I want to say also that whatever we do with the cameras doesn't in any way absolve us, either the council or the community as a whole, from doing the other work that we need to do in terms of dealing with the situation that we have in Durham that creates crime. Doesn't absolve us from the work we need to give everybody a safe and decent house to live in. It doesn't absolve us from the work that we need to do to make sure that everybody's got decent health care, and that nobody goes to bed hungry, and that every kid has a good education, and those are community things. We have a role in it, you all have a role in it, we all do, and having this, this camera is a technical solution to a small part of this issue. But that's all it is, and it won't get at the underlying causes. And it won't also, there are some other things that it won't do as well. It's not going to solve Durham's need for genuine community policing. It won't address the need for expanding our unique and constructive misdemeanor diversion program. It won't address the need to make low-level drug offenses the lowest priority for police enforcement, and it won't address the need to bring an end to racial inequities and traffic stops and searches. Those are responsibilities that we all have to keep in mind, and we have to know that this won't affect that, and we have to help make changes. But what cameras can do, I believe, is help us meet three important goals. First is reducing incidents of police use of force. Second is reduce complaints against our police officers. And third, as a result of these, increase police accountability and increase trust in our police department. And I'm pretty sure by now that I've read pretty much all the studies on this, and there is, what I will tell you is, from my research, is there's really one good study. And the study that I have read that I think is a good study, a really good study, is from Rialto, California, a city of 100,000 people. And the study was done by the University of Cambridge, researchers from the University of Cambridge in the UK, for a period of 12 months, and encompassed about 1,000 police shifts, about 50,000 hours of policing. Each shift received a randomly assigned, a random assignment, either as a treatment shift, where the officers wore cameras, or as a control shift, which the officers did not wear cameras. And the results were very significant. Officers without cameras were roughly twice as likely to be involved in use of force incidents as officers with cameras. In addition, according to the researcher's summary of their results, complaints filed against officers dropped from .7 complaints per 1,000 contacts to 0, to .07 contacts per 1,000 complaints. I know those numbers are hard to understand, but it's a tenfold drop. These are dramatic positive results, and I don't think we can ignore them. The study didn't speak to a lot of the issues that we have to think about when we're considering this policy. They didn't think about the length of time the video will be stored, when the cameras should be activated, when and how video can be accessed by members of the public. But I think it did, you know, the same group is replicating this study in 30 cities around the world. I've seen the results of one of those, which is from Denver, was just released in September. A six-month study of 23,000 police interactions in Denver found that arrest rates and use of force incidents, when they did a public relations campaign about the cameras, talking about the cameras coming in, those two things, arrest rates and use of force incidents, fell across the city, even outside the areas where the cameras were used. In addition, police officers who wore the cameras were 18% less likely to make an arrest and 8% less likely to use force than officers who did not wear cameras. So these are significant, and given the results of these studies and its replications, I believe that we need to implement body-worn cameras in Durham, and I think we need to do it within the confines of a general order that does its best to strike the difficult balance amongst privacy, transparency, and accountability. I think the current draft of our general order goes a long way towards striking the appropriate balance, but I believe improvements can be made to it which will improve it for the residents and for police officers alike. The thorniest issue is the accessibility of the video to the public, and I'll address that last, but let me mention a few other important issues as well. The draft general order says that whenever possible, officers are encouraged to inform individuals they are being recorded, however this discretion remains with the individual officers. I think that it's important to change this because the, one of the, other than the use of the camera, the other important factor that the researchers in Rialto found was that they were adamant that a significant factor in the improved encounters between police and community members was the fact that police announced at the beginning of each encounter, insofar as possible, that the encounter was being recorded. A Cambridge University account of their research finding says, "The researchers say the knowledge that events are being recorded creates self-awareness in all participants during police interactions. This is the critical component that turns body-worn video into preventative treatment." In addition, the lead researcher, Barak Ariel, writes, "An officer is obliged to issue a warning from the start that an encounter is being filmed, impacting the psyche of all involved and conveying a straightforward pragmatic message, we're all being watched, videotaped, and expecting to follow the rules." Given these findings, which are critical to the most advanced research in the field, it's imperative that the general order require, rather than encourage, officers to tell residents at the beginning of each encounter that the encounter is being filmed. Of course, there will be exceptions to this practice, but the strong presumption needs to be that officer is required to announce the filming of encounters. Within the section of the general order having to do with times when the use of body-worn cameras prohibited, I'm troubled by the statement, "The recordings which are restricted from recording by this policy can nevertheless be retained as part of a criminal investigative file." If information is obtained, and you addressed this earlier, Ms. Birdsong, if information obtained is obtained in contravention to the policy, to the policy's privacy protections, it seems clear that this information should not be used as part of a criminal investigation. In situations where someone has heightened expectation of privacy, and when our general order expressly recognizes that expectation and prohibits recording, I don't believe we should use that video for purposes of criminal investigation. I also know that the Police Department is interested, as I am, in reducing the length of time for which video is stored. The storage is expensive, and in general, we all want the least amount of unflagged video stored as possible because of our common privacy goals. So I hope that, I want to go back again to a quest I've been, something I've been asking about previously, which is that we reduce the storage period for the default and the infractions category from 180 to 90 days. I know when we talked about this, the Police Department responded that the DA's office wanted this to be 180 days, but I noticed the, looked at the Charlotte Mecklenburg Police Department, as a 45-day retention period is its default, including for traffic stops resulting in infractions, and the Greensboro Department has a 90-day retention period for any citizen contact that does not involve a criminal investigation. The Department of Justice Officer Community Policing recommends 60 to 90-day default storage period, and I believe that we ought to be able to adhere to this as well. Another change, I think, as well, is in the listing of video storage times. So there's currently no mention in the list of flagging incidents for longer storage which involve the use of force or any recording that is the subject of a complaint. I know that the department has a category called professional standards, and I know the department intends for this, and we discussed it at the work session, this category to include these subcategories of use of force or recording that are subjects of complaint. But in the interest of transparency and building trust in the community, I think it's important that residents reading this general order know that incidents involving use of force or a complaint will be stored indefinitely, and I think that needs explicit clarification in the general order. At the end of the section on data management and retention, there's a prohibition against employees destroying, deleting, or altering videos, and there are other regulations on the use of the cameras throughout the general order. And the department has said rightly, again in our work session, that officers do not follow these rules or to be disciplined according to existing department regulations. I understand that, and I know that would happen. But I also believe that it's important, I don't believe we need to list those regulations here, but I think we should at least incorporate them by reference. That is, at the appropriate place in the general order, the order should say that officers who violate the order are subject to discipline according to another general order, and that name and number of that general order should be listed, so that the public is confident, understands that this will happen. I wanted to appreciate, my colleague, Don Moffett, has discussed with me that the section on a complainant review of audio/video recordings should not limit reviewing of the videos to people who have filed a formal complaint, rather than anyone who is a subject of video should be able to do it. I don't think we want to encourage people, and I take this from Don, to file complaints simply to get access to the video. I don't think that would be good for anyone, and I think Don has some really good ideas about improving the wording of this section. And I want to say that I appreciate the concerns, the advocates around the issue of civil asset forfeiture, and David, I appreciated your bringing us this. I will say that civil asset forfeiture is not something that I'm well-versed in, and I want to learn more about it, but I will also say that I don't think it's a critical issue here, and I'll tell you why. I think that we, this is mostly being funded by the general fund, with some significant funding from Civil Asset Forfeiture Fund, and it's been suggested that we might want to use the Civil Asset Forfeiture Funds, for example, to fund summer camps for youth or summer job training and that sort of thing, and we could certainly do that, but that would just mean that we would be then taking funds from the general fund that we'd be doing that with to buy these cameras, and if you accept the premise, as I do, that we want to have a, buy these cameras if we can get a general order good enough, that just, you know, these funds are fungible, and I don't think it would change anything. So while I recognize, I say I recognize, I'm learning about the civil asset forfeiture issue, and I appreciate your raising it, I'm not sure it's something that is critical And so finally, there's the critical issue of public access to the videos and the circumstances under which that should occur. Everyone in this discussion recognizes the delicate balance that we must strike here between privacy on the one hand and transparency and accountability the other. I will say that a recent addition to the policy has really strengthened this in my mind, and that is the statement that inspection or review may be allowed at the discretion of the chief of police, the city manager, and/or city council, who may elect to release such records in response to a compelling public interest. Still, there's a concern abroad in the community, this doesn't go far enough to bolster accountability, and I think that concern is valid. Charlie Reese, my colleague, has made a proposal to increase accountability by establishing a rebuttable presumption that any body camera video recording that depicts the use of force by a police officer should be released to the public. I'm attracted to this idea for its simplicity and openness, but I've come to become concerned with what I think might be its practical application, and let me describe it. I think a way that policy might work out often in ways, might be in ways that we don't really like. Many police use-of-force encounters, I think, are like this. I come out of a bar, and I've had too much to drink. I get in a fight with a person next to me, a police comes in, a police officer comes in to break it up, might grab me firmly, might, you know, put me on the ground, and these are use-of-force incidents. And I think, under a policy where every use of force is presumed to be public, to be made public to everyone interested made public to everyone interested into the press, I very -- let me just say, I very much doubt as the slightly drunk person perpetrating the fight, that I would want that video to be released to the public without any protection. And I believe that would be a common outcome of a proposal such as the one that makes all use of force video public, absent a compelling public interest to the contrary. We'd be making public the bad or unfortunate behavior of lots of our residents who don't deserve to be shamed in that way. It makes me think of the publication The Slammer, which I know some of you have seen. It's a money-making publication of mugshots that exist in the racks in convenience stores. This publication is deliberately shaming of people accused of crimes. I don't want us to inadvertently contribute to, in a significant way, to that same kind of shaming of Durhamites. The vast majority of times, it wouldn't be the officer who would be embarrassed. The officer, after all, is behind the camera. It would be the community member who would not want his or her actions willy-nilly released to the public and the media. Still, I think we do need to have more accountability in the policy. So what I suggest, I have two suggestions, and I'm very open to others. First, we might want to consider having a three-person independent panel that will review all video use of force incidents, say, monthly, to decide whether or not they should be made public. This panel could be appointed by the council. I'm not sure what the practical barriers would be to this, but I think it would bear discussion. A second option, I think, would be to strengthen the general order's description of the process by which a video could be made public by the police chief, the city manager, or the city council. Right now, there is no discussion of such a process. We should make it clear that this is not a vague, impenetrable process, but rather that there is a shared oversight that is genuine, and that the public can easily notify the city's manager office or the city council about a request that a video be reviewed for possible public release. This would trigger a specific, transparent process. If this process is strong enough, it could provide the necessary accountability. I don't pretend to have all the answers on this, but I do know that I do think we need some stronger accountability, and I'm open to ideas about it. So, again, I want to thank everyone who's had all these suggestions. I particularly want to thank the police department leaders, Chief Marsh, Chief Smith, and others, who've taken the initiative to begin this process and to carry it through, because I think that if we do it right, body cameras can be very helpful in terms of reducing use of force incidents and negative police encounters with the community. But we have to do it right. And so I wanted to thank you, and I think that there are many issues that still need to be figured out, and I hope that we can put this off, have another work session around it, have the administration come back with some modifications to the general order. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Welcome. Remember your places, okay?
I'm next. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, everyone, for coming tonight and for staying so late. And I also want to thank you, Chief Marsh, for your work on this, and let everyone know that the policy has greatly improved over the last few weeks, and that's due primarily to the work of Chief Marsh and his continuing to bring us draft after draft and really responding to community input. And I think that we have a policy now that is much better than it was at the beginning, and I think that it still needs to be better in order to move forward with this camera purchase. And I wanted to go back to what Jade was saying earlier about a culture of trust, and that that's really our goal here, is to build the trust between the communities and the police department, and that implementing cameras without sufficiently balancing the need for transparency and the right of the public to access the video with the necessary concerns for privacy is essentially moving forward without a policy that will actively promote accountability, rather than just adding another tool to the police toolbox to surveil communities. And I believe that that fundamentally moves us backward, not forward, and that moving forward tonight would absolutely be worse for advancing long-term trust with the police department than waiting and moving forward with a better policy. So I think that we're not just voting on a contract tonight, we're voting on how these cameras will be deployed in the community, and that we need to decide on a policy that works for our communities now, before we move forward with the purchase, not later, so that we don't have these cameras on the streets being operated under this flawed policy that doesn't provide for the accountability that I think that the community is looking for when we are talking about spending public money on implementing this program. I want to say there are very good ideas out there about how to write these policies. There's a national coalition of civil rights and civil liberties organizations, including the ACLU and the NAACP, that have put together a detailed guidance and made it publicly available on the Internet, and recommend that cities work with these folks in the civil liberties and civil rights community to craft policies that protect citizens and work both to, you know, to reduce police use of force, as we hope cameras will in the long term, but to protect the accountability that we need. And I think that a delay in this decision will give us time to make that happen. Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, I was going to speak, but everything I was going to say has been said. So, thank you. I pass.
First, thanks to everybody, Chief, folks that are here. I'll make that very brief, because it's late. I have three things I want to say. First, I do have a little bit of concern. I understand the overarching concern about the use of improperly-recorded video, but I am concerned about saying that we would -- we might embrace the idea of forbidding its use in criminal investigations. And the only reason I'm concerned about it is I think about a victim, the only evidence of which of a crime, might be that video, which we're saying can't be used, which we would prefer not to be used in a criminal investigation. And I just think -- just trying to think all that out. The second thing is, I just want to observe that this is probably going to be one of the most publicly-read general orders. I think generally, the general orders are written for officers to give them very specific guidelines. But I think that in writing this, I think that Councilmember Schul has touched on this, we have to also write it more -- this one, probably almost more than any other, for the general public as well, making sure the terminology is clear and accessible. And then the third thing is, I appreciate the issue on civil asset forfeiture. This is one I haven't really thought about before, and I think it's one that we really need to think about in terms of what is -- what's going on with civil asset forfeiture, what are the unintended consequences or intended consequences, but what -- where we might stand as a council on the city of Durham participating in civil asset forfeiture program. Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to really try to be brief. I really am. Brief is five minutes. If I go over five minutes, somebody yanked my tail.
That's it.
First of all, I want to say, I support purchasing the body cameras. I'm ready to move on that this evening. And my rationale for that is, has been very clear. Chief Marsh said it, that none of these cameras will be put in place until we have a general order that is accepted. The value of purchasing cameras now is that at least we get ahead of the train. We can have the cameras in here, they can be in the training, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So when at some point in time, the general order's in place, we're prepared to go. But having said that, I recognize that there's been a request made by one of our council members to at least delay it for two weeks. And generally, we try to honor council members' requests, so I support that effort. I respect everyone that's been out here to speak. I respect what you've said. I don't necessarily agree with everything that's been said, but by the same token, I respect your right to do it, and that's why I've been trying to be as open as possible to allow persons to make their comments. I also hope you respect our right to make a decision, a final decision on this. And I'll say to my council members, this is an area that we're really getting into that's really in the purview of the city manager and the police department. It's not the council's responsibility to write general orders. But having said that, we went through the Human Relations Commission. I know there's one particular area concerning written consent to search. Again, that's a police matter, but we had our recommendations, gave it back to the city manager, and he made a decision. My recommendation is, you know, this is almost like a camel fighting, a committee trying to write general orders. You've heard comments from the general public, you've heard everybody on the council give comments, you've heard the staff give comments. My recommendation is that, it appears that we have at least three council members that have pretty strong opinions about what should go into the general order. So I'm going to recommend that Councilwoman Schul, Councilwoman Reese, Councilwoman Jillian Johnson -- Jillian Johnson, and if, Don, you want to get into it, fine. You guys come together and be prepared to present to the manager and ultimately to the council your recommendations for the general orders. Because this can't keep going on. It can't keep going on, and at some point in time, we've got to make a decision. I'm ready to make a decision this evening, but I respect what's been said. But if you guys are willing to take on that responsibility, Reese, Schul, and Johnson, are you willing to do that?
Of course, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so let's do it this way. Let the three of you guys and ladies come together with your recommendation, back to the city manager, and then ultimately back to this council in two weeks.
Three weeks.
Three weeks. Three weeks, okay? All right. Entertaining the motion. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, you had a -- go ahead.
I just wanted to thank everyone for coming. I dare not say anything else about this subject tonight. But there is something that is really troubling to me about all the conversation, and that is the lack of trust that we join the community and the police department. That is really troubling. It's not the policy, it is just a lack of trust. And so somehow, we need to rebuild the trust, and that's all I have to say. Thank you, everybody, for coming. I don't know how a policy can rebuild trust. You just have to somehow trust the manager to do what he needs to do, the chief, and everybody who is in command position, to change the culture. And I think they are trying to do that. Thank you for your work. Chief, you've got some help now, and good luck.
Did I do it in five minutes?
Yes.
Thank you, okay. So I entertain the motion to delay this until three weeks, March 2nd, and also to have -- whatever the right date is. What is the right date? March 7th. And also to have a committee of Councilwoman Reese, Councilwoman Schul, and Councilwoman Jillian Johnson to work on a general orders to present to the city manager for his review.
So moved.
It's been properly moved, so, Madam Clerk, will you open the vote? Open the vote? Close the vote?
It passes seven to zero.
Any other items to come before the council? Recognize Councilwoman Davis.
And I believe in free speech, but I think there was a statement made today that accused the jail or the sheriff's department of murdering someone. I just don't think that that needs to be gone unchallenged. I know that sometimes we get into hyperbolic speech, but I don't know that there is any proof at all that anyone in the sheriff's department has murdered anyone.
With respect, I'm willing to repeat that challenge. Good.
Okay. Anything else? Is anything else to come before the council? If not, we're adjourned at 10:40 PM.